Thank you. This is the planning board meeting of December 14th, 2021 at 7:00. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. To begin, I have a sign-in sheet at the table in the front there with a pen. And anybody that hasn't signed in yet, could you please sign in? If you're from KAVI, you can put your address down. If you come from some organization, if you just put your name in the organization's name. Thank you. And we don't have a recording secretary with us tonight. She's going to do this by video. So if everybody could please speak into the microphone when you're talking so that she can pick this up, so that she can type out the minutes for the meeting. All right. So the first thing we have is a sign permit for Brenner Signs and Arnings, from Brenner Signs and Arnings. And it's for, I think it's for refillable. And it's MAP 24 lot 3-1. What's 160 North Main Street, Unit A. Is there anybody here for that? And if you could just sit down and speak into the microphone, please, and give us your name and address.
My name is Carrie Garofalo from Brenner Signs and Arnings, 66 Federal Fairness Road in Plymouth.
All right. So what do we have here? It's from what I looked at, it's just a, it's just going to have one small sign on the directory sign?
Yep, we have one for each side. They're six inches by 42 inches on three mil di bond, and they're going to be affixed the same way the other signs are on that pylon, non-illuminated.
Okay. And is that going to... Is there going to be one place on the building, too?
Yes, there is. So that one on the building, those are all, they're PVC cut-out letters that are going to have a digital print, a digital print applied to the face, and then the edges will be painted with the corresponding colors of the letters. And that is, it's 120 inches by 30 inches total.
So that's within our bylaw?
Yep.
What? 16 square feet is...
Well, what is that?
That's 25.
Uh, 25.
Two for the outside, so almost 27 square feet.
But is this any bigger than...
What was up there before?
See, I don't know if these are grandfathered, or...
It's smaller than what was up there before.
Yeah, I think in this particular plaza, you know, there was a lot of signs that, with the newer signs, I think they've been grandfathered because they're just, they're sort of replacing what the old ones were. That was before we had the new sign regulations.
And is this an opportunity for her to give them a plug for what they're actually doing there?
Well, let's get over the, before we do that, yeah, we can, we'll do that at the end, but let's get over the discussion of, you know, whether this sign will be allowed or not.
And with this sign, I would, it would prohibit them from putting any window signs or any signs out. Because with this sign, they've already exceeded the maximum allowable full signage.
Yeah, this is...
So what they have right now is, they're not going to do anything else because they had to have the landlord who actually owns the building approve what they were doing. We went back and forth with this a while with the landlord. He had to approve everything that was going on before we could go through with anything.
All right. Yeah, I mean, we've gone through this before, and I think we've just kind, it's been grandfathered, you know, so usually they keep to the same size of sign that was there before. So I don't know how everybody feels about that, but...
Well, if it was the same business, I could see it being grandfathered, but with a new business, they should fall under the same regulations. And I understand that the outside pylons were grandfathered in because clearly...
Yeah.
...the tractor store or the sports store.
Right. Well...
How come it's, how come it's so far in excess of what's allowable?
Honestly, I'm not sure. We did go smaller, like I said, than what was up there before. I was not part of this whole project from the very beginning, so I just, I just know that it is smaller than actually what was up there, and that had been, what had been taken down from the previous owners.
So I'm looking at this, and according to this, it's 10 feet in from each side, but the whole, so I don't understand why you made it 30 feet. Is that what, you're looking to make the whole entire sign 30 feet? Or is it going to...
It's 30 inch, 30 inches by 10 feet long. 30 inches high.
Oh, 30 inches.
So it's three 10-foot sections.
Three 10-foot sections.
Yeah, the width of the face is 30 foot.
So in all fairness, the refillable part that you've got there should have really exceeded, you're looking to exceed it all the way to the end?
No.
Nope.
On each side?
No, she's just showing that there's 10, 10 feet on either, either side of the 30-foot.
So it's open 10 feet here, and then the sign, and then it's open 10 feet there.
It's just a location, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's just the location of where they're going to put it.
Yeah, they're just saying and showing that it's centered.
And here's the size right here. Yeah, that's, yeah.
I saw that on the page before. So it's really 14 inches by about 10 feet, is that...
10 feet by two and a half.
I mean, I mean, I can, I hadn't looked at this before, so this is the first time I've looked at this. So I could find out what the history is here, and if we've allowed signs to be grandfathered before. I mean, how, let me, maybe I should talk to the building inspector and talk to, talk to somebody about, of course, he's new, too, so I don't know how much he's, he's going to do. But generally, in this shopping center and the one with the hardware store is, we usually go by what had been allowed there before.
I thought that was only on the pylons, no?
No, it was also on the buildings, too, yeah.
So I put this application in twice. The first time, I went, I called the building department first to find out what we were allotted there.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we went by.
Oh, so the building inspector...
So I had, I always call
Yeah.
the building departments and say, what are we allowed for signage on the storefronts that we're putting signs up on? And this is what we were told we were allowed to do.
I mean, to me, the...
Did he, did he tell you in accordance with what...
He read me the bylaws and stuff and told me exactly what I could have.
Do you have the...
It's a chart.
Do you have the article number?
It's a what?
It's a chart.
I love the chart.
It says...
I don't, I'm just telling you what, what I was told. That's what we always go by.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't that taken, wasn't that responsibility taken out of our hands anyways?
No, not yet. Not yet.
All right. Well, I'm okay if it's not going to exceed what's already there. I don't think it should be bigger than what's already there.
Right. I don't have a big problem with it. I just want to make sure that she understands that window signs, but the owner's not here, so...
Right.
Okay.
I can tell them, because I'm pretty sure.
Well, we, under, under the conditions, I can add that, that window signs will not be allowed. All right. Does that, that work for you? Okay, okay.
Now can we find out what exactly they're requiring?
Yes, it'd be nice to hear what they're...
Well, let's, let's vote on this first.
Okay.
Let's vote, vote on it, and then we can sign it. And, and, and I don't know if this lady knows, because she's from the sign company, not from the company that's, that's going to actually occupy the space. But let's take a vote on this, so...
Caneelie Shea will motion to approve the refillable sign.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Those in favor to approve the sign permit, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so, so it's 5-0 to approve. All right. Oh, with the condition that window signs not to be allowed. All right. So that takes care of that. And do you know anything about the business that's going in there?
Unfortunately, I do not.
Oh, gee. All right. That's what I figured. That's what all the sign people say.
Maybe I should start learning, huh?
I know, it's a shame, but it's a good opportunity for the business to put a plug in for themselves.
Right. No, you're absolutely right.
They know what's coming into town.
The last meeting that I went to, they asked me the same thing, and yeah, you're right.
And unfortunately, it seems like the building inspector should have probably given you the dimensions based on the total size, instead of, I think he was probably giving you the dimensions on just the wall and not including all of them.
Well, I specified that we were doing a building sign and a pylon sign.
Yeah. All right. Well, as, as you heard, we're, we're working on who's going to be responsible for that in the future.
Yep.
But it would be nice if both parties were saying the same thing.
Correct.
All right. So if we could pass that around, we'll sign it, and then we'll go on to the A and As we have before us tonight. All right, let's, let's go on. So the next, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So the next we have is, we have A and R for re-division of lots, which is MAP 36 lots 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 at Whistleberry Glen. So it's CE Development LLC, and this is for discussion and possible vote.
Hi, Kyle Devonish from Outback Engineering for CE Development. So the re-division of lots 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 for, in the pre, it's already been approved subdivision. It was actually approved quite a while ago, but it's new owners. And the re-division of those lots was only for the interior lot lines. There's no change in frontage. There's no change in the exterior lot lines to the subdivision. It was just to rework. I think the, our client, CE Development, has a couple of potential buyers that wanted them reworked. And the way I think it's lot 2 and 3 are shaped, if you start moving lines around, it's kind of, you have to chase it down Stanley, Stanley Lane, and meeting all frontages, setbacks, area requirements. And it was really just reworking to make the lots nicer and give the, I think, 2 and 3 were tight, narrow, I should say, and just reworking them to make them a little bit better construction-wise.
Okay. So I see that, okay, so on lot 2, for instance, you have a dashed line, dashed dotted line in dark, and then you have the new property line, which is solid dark line.
Yes.
And that is also lot 3, you have old lot line, which is the dark dashed line, and then you have the solid line just below it. And then on lot 4, you also have dark dashed line, and then the new lines of the dark lines. And then lot 5, same thing, you have a dark dashed line where the old line was, and a new, a new line in dark. So all these meet the, the frontage didn't change in any of these lots, and the square footage of the lots are all over 40,000, which is, which is what is zoned for, 40,000 square feet.
Yep.
So...
So it looks like with the exception of lot 3, you tried to keep them all at right about 40,000?
Correct.
Yeah. So it, to me, it, you know, it, it looks fine to me. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, no, not, not a, typically the, well, normally there's 100-foot boundary zone listed on these. You are aware that anything inside of the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetlands requires prior conservation commission approval?
Yes. Yeah, we've been developing multiple lots throughout the subdivision, and we've actually filed NOIs with CONCOM for multiple of them.
Excellent.
And I took the 100-foot off because the lines were getting a little hectic in there.
Sure.
And I left the 65 because it's a no, no structure, or no building.
Yep.
So just for, I tried to simplify it.
All right. Any other questions?
No other questions, I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, so we have a, a motion made by Kevin Robinson to endorse the, the re-division of lots 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 at Whistleberry Glen.
Caneelie Shea will...
So... Okay, we'll vote. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that's 5-0 to approve. All right, one down. Oh, if you could put, everybody could put these aside, because we're going to have to sign these at the, at the end of the night. Or, did you want to take these all signed back with you? Or, oh, you need the mylar, right?
Yeah, I need the mylar signed.
Okay, so if you could...
Can we sign the individual ones?
So we can sign the individual ones, yeah. We can take these and sign these at the end of the meeting. But we'll sign the mylar, which is...
If you, if you wouldn't mind, it's, it's kind of a timing thing with sales.
All right. Well, so before, we'll go through the other, and...
I can hang around, too, whenever, whatever works for you.
Okay. It's in the box there. We'll, I'll have to dig it out.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll sign that. So the next is... This is also at Whistleberry Glen. This is to combine lots, this is MAP 36, and it's lots 7 and 8 at Whistleberry Glen and CE Development. Oops, no, did I say that right? Yeah, okay. And so this is for discussion and possible vote, too. So I looked at this, and... So I looked at this, and you're just taking two lots and you're just combining them?
Yeah, there was a...
Into one lot?
I don't think it's gone through, but a potential buyer that wants to purchase both properties and construct their house generally with the old lot line bisecting the house.
Okay.
So it was thought best to, I think it came from the building inspector as well, to combine them formally.
Combine the lots. So you took lot 7, and you took lot 8, and, and you show the old lot line, and you're calling the new lot Lot 7A.
Yes, sir.
All right. So...
So you're eliminating 8 altogether?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, 7 is kind of absorbing 8, if you, if you will.
7 absorbing 8, that's why it's 7A. Okay.
Yeah. It's, they're both the same. It's going to be in the same ownership, so...
So I have no problem with that. That's pretty straightforward. Any questions by any of the planning board members? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to endorse...
A motion to endorse that, I guess?
I'll second that.
Are we signing each individual?
Yeah, so keep, keep these, you can stack them on top of each other, but at the end of the night, we have to sign and date all these paper ones, too. And we have the two, we have the two mylars for this gentleman here that will sign tonight, and, and he can, and he can take those back with him. All right. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so it's 5-0 to approve. All right. So let me dig those two out, and we'll sign them.
Thank you guys very much.
I'm just going to put these plans here, and with the pens, so the planning board members could come and sign these.
On lot releases? The two lots were released. One of them is, has a potential buyer. Is there a problem with switching one of the lots that's been held
No, this is...
to another lot?
Um, we, there may, there is right now. I can explain to you later, but could you send an email to my, to the planning board in KAVI?
Yep.
Okay. Then I'll talk to you then.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Today's the 14th, right?
All day.
12, 14.
Samples. Samples I've fooled every branch so far. A little bit white, thicker voice. They haven't known yet.
All right. You just need the mylars, right?
Yeah.
All right. There you go. There's the plans. Here's your elastics. We'll keep the pens. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I don't know if anybody's here for this or not. We also had another A and R. It was for a rear lot on Zero Ward Street for Edgewood Boggs LLC. Is anybody here for that?
Yes.
All right. If you could step up and give us your name and address, a business?
Yep. It's Matt Rhodes from Edgewood Boggs in 73 Tremont Street.
All right. Yeah, we do have this plan, and I talked to the building inspector about this, and he felt that this, the lot that you're creating wasn't a buildable lot, and it has to go through him. So he said the only way we could endorse this, if we, if we, if a note was put on the plan to, that this is not a buildable lot, zoning relief needs to be required in order to make it a building lot?
Actually, Bruce, it, it has to be in continuous ownership since 1998, and according to the assessors, that they've taken control out of it later than that, so, and it's switched hands again in 2005, from 99 to 2005, so...
That's the same family.
It's not eligible for...
It's the same family.
It, Daniel O'Connor was the original owner.
No, I meant 2005, yes.
Pardon?
In 2005, it was still the same family.
Yeah, but it, it hasn't been in continuous ownership by Daniel O'Connor, is that correct?
That's correct. Not since the late 90s.
Yeah. So it's, it's not, it's not eligible?
Yeah, I, I didn't discuss that with the building inspector, but I knew that there was, there was that timeframe there, too. So...
So what was the timeframe again? It was May 4th, 1998, and it appears it was transferred to a trust in, a year later in April of 99, and then it was transferred to a limited liability corporation of the same name in 2005. Okay. And what was the statute in terms of how many years? It says... That it has to be in continuous? Since 1998. Well, what's the bylaw in terms of the amount of years? It says not more than one rear lot should be created from a property or set of continuous properties held in common ownership as of May 4th, 1998. In order to be eligible for a rear lot, such property or set of continuous properties held in common ownership as of May 4th, 1998 shall not have been divided after such date. And then it goes on to say no further division is eligible after that point.
In what section of the bylaw is that?
It is zoning bylaw 2344, page 15 of the zoning bylaws.
I would suggest that you, you should really work this out with the building inspector?
Mm-hmm. No, we have been. We've been in discussions.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just left his office an hour ago, and, and he said that he wouldn't, the way he reads the bylaw, he, he says he just couldn't approve this as a buildable lot, and I suppose that's what you want it to be, a buildable lot.
Yes. I think his contention, or his interpretation, was the building line?
Yes.
The 150-foot building line?
Yes.
But our research has shown, multiple plans being approved, that a building line does not have to include the setbacks.
Well, you have to convince him of that.
No, I understand that.
And because, and we could approve it, but like he said, he said, the planning board can approve it, but when it comes to me, it's not a buildable lot.
No, I understand that. It was the department's, the building department's suggestion.
Mm-hmm.
I was going to withdraw that from tonight's meeting, and they suggested I do it.
Yeah.
So it appears that maybe I've spent money for something they suggested I should do, which I was going to withdraw.
Oh, you were going to, because when I, last time I spoke, a day or two ago, the building inspector said that, that you were going to withdraw it.
Yes, and the department suggested I go forward with planning, because there were opinions there that the interpretation has always been held to 150, which would include setbacks.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. We'd, we'd have to take a look at that. I mean, if you withdraw right now, I mean, if you just, it's an A and I, you can just withdraw the A and R. if you withdraw right now, I mean, if you just, it's an A and I, you can just withdraw the A and I. And and I think you should just work this out with the building inspector somehow. If you have evidence of, of other lots being created with a, a building width that's different than his interpretation, then I guess you just have to
No, I understand. That's, that's where we were and we needed to approach zoning to get that. And then to show the multiple plans that have been approved and built on.
Okay.
Um, however, this gentleman's point as to
The timing is also another thing, yep.
Was, and again, I was working with the past planner and building inspector and going forward based on their information and informal meetings, which got us to the plans that we have based on them feeling that that was all acceptable. Now, is there something we can do in regards to that?
I'd have to take a look at it a little more closely. I can't do it tonight, I mean the
Yeah, sure.
It's, it's, but, you know, so we have, we have two things going here. We, we have the building inspector talking about the building line, he, he didn't think was acceptable, and then also the, the timeframe too, and we'd have to get your information and so we can check it out.
Yeah, it's just the, it's from the assessors department. It says this is actually three different lots that are being combined and changed around.
So, uh, I don't know if you wanna if you, if you wanna withdraw or if you just wanna table this to the next meeting until we get some more information on this, uh?
I guess if, if I could withdraw and not have to have spent four hundred and fifty dollars, that's what I would do.
It seems reasonable that he shouldn't, shouldn't even be here. But
Right.
I, I don't know the, I don't, I wouldn't have any answer to how to sort that out.
So you're saying that you, you, your application was four hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes.
And will you be coming back with another plan? I know that the building inspector did propose some alternatives, I don't know if those were
Well, those are
Acceptable?
Alternatives meant that we needed to somehow get information from zoning to show them the plans, but there's no way I can approach zoning. So we were trying to figure out how to move forward. So I was in the office again this morning and met with Kevin and the building inspector was there and they were talking and Kevin's opinion was we've never included, you know, the setbacks or excluded them from the hundred and fifty-foot building line. And so I needed to be able to present, the building inspector or commissioner did not wanna see the plans 'cause he can't make a zoning decision. So he suggested I take the plans to zoning, so I was trying to figure out, well, how do I do that? And so I was going to withhold from tonight's meeting and then I got the phone call this afternoon that said you should go to the meeting and go through with the plans. So that's why.
I think we should allow him to withdraw and maybe.
From the planning board inspector?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We should be able to allow him to withdraw.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Come here.
Will he get his, a refund for that?
Alright, yeah, so this is a Form A.
It's a backlot.
Yeah, so, so can we just allow him to do that or, I was just gonna, we could, he can just take the plans and we don't have, we don't have to make a vote on this. I'm just questioning, Amy Questle from KMP Law is here with us tonight and also I was gonna introduce everybody, but, 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 so he can just take the plans?
He makes a request to withdraw and you guys vote to accept the request. That's it.
Okay, so that's it. Okay, alright, okay, if you wanna withdraw, we'll
I make a request to withdraw.
So we'll vote on, on accepting the request.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept his request.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. Okay, so Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Those in favor to approve the request, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so that's five zero to approve the request. Okay. And I would, I would think that if, if you changed it, you wouldn't have to go through the four hundred and fifty dollar application fee if you modified it. I'd have to find that out tomorrow though.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, do you wanna take the plan, the MyLaw with you or?
Probably at least the MyLaw and
Okay. This is set for this here. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Alright, so the next is a lot release for Linvia's Path. And we have a I have an email from the owner of the property and they wanted to continue this Linvia's Path lot release to the next meeting for December twenty-eighth. So if I could get a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue Linvia's Path lot release. I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so we have motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so five zero. Approved. Alright, next. We have Weathervein at Patriot Pines. And, uh, so this is for a discussion and possible vote. So we had a, a meeting before and it was discussed about the minor modi, about the modification to Patriot Pines. And, um, so in this modification we're gonna combine the foundations, so we're gonna have triplexes out there. And then in addition to that, um, there was a mailroom that was gonna be added in the Center Island with a, with a, with some parking, it looked like six spaces, spaces of parking in the back and I guess that's to access the the mailroom for the people that live there. So.
I actually have a question. Is there a reason why there's two ones, two twos, two threes and two fours? Or are they supposed to be twelves and thirteens and fourteens?
Okay, I, good question. I don't have my glasses on, so I absolutely can't read any of those, thank you.
Yeah, if you wanna introduce yourself, please.
Eagle Terrace has one three five as a unit, two four six, but then inside, there's also a one, two, four
Yep.
And a three.
So I'll take a look at that and I'll squint the best I can. Just opening up, I'm Jeff Tocchio, I represent Weathervein at Patriot Pines LLC. Mark Romanowicz is with me here at the table. Sarah Sterns is off to my left and then Jim Bristol, the principals, further I think to the left.
Sarah looks familiar.
Yes. She's, she's been a lot of time in Carver. So we'll take a look and what I can answer on that, if there has, something has to be renumbered, we had a numbering that was agreed to with the fire department and we made some changes. What happens in this is we've got the twenty-four units, which had all the one, two, three, four, et cetera. Now, it's basically eight buildings, but with three units per building, so we did go in and make some numbering changes. So if the numbering is inconsistent, we can go back in with the fire department and confirm what we want for the numbers. I just
It's not inconsistent, there's just a couple of each. There's a couple ones, a couple twos, a couple threes and a couple fours.
Yeah.
Depending on the street it's on.
That's the answer, thank you.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, I was just noticing that. Eagle Terrace, Fairway Landing and Weathervein Drive.
So they were all laid out so that they conformed with their requirements, so they'll know where they are. I understand that you've got a, a letter from fire department saying that they had looked at this and, and it was good with them. One of the issues that we discussed with them is now that they're, the triplexes, they do require sprinklers, so that's part of the proposal as well. So as we go forward, what we're looking at is a minor modification to basically effectuate what we were talking about last time. Unless you folks want a refresh, I know we were before you on October twenty-sixth. Right, you can see that's what it looked like as of the last modi, modification and then what we've done, Mark, if we can go to the next it's under construction just to get everyone refreshed and we've got two foundations, excuse me, two houses which are going up vertical, we've got a couple of other foundations that are in. And then you can see that the site is, you know, basically denuded. All of the roads are in, you know, the other, infrastructure is installed and we're in a position where if you folks approve this, we can then go in and get the rest of the building permits issued and then go forward and start to, start construction back up, get underway, which we really need to do before the winter, particularly with respect to the houses that are already going vertical. Need to get in there and then start to be in a position where we can protect those from the weather. Mark, if you can go to the next one, please. This is the array that we put together, so what we did was we made each of the independent buildings in a different color so that you can see how they are all laid out. They rely upon all of the installed infrastructure that's there today, so it winds up being a efficient and somewhat economical way to respond to all of the work that's already been performed to put it all in. Looking through with the building inspector, he agrees that they're all triplexes and just as recently, this evening said, you know, good job, I'd say, in being able to pivot and be in a position where we could construct the, you know, the triplexes that we all talked about. Mark, have you got the next one? Is that the, the layouts? What we're doing, and this is indicative, you can actually see the floor plans, these are units that we have experience in constructing. They basically connect, whether it's a utility room or, you know, extra type of room on these, these buildings, or I should say the units for each building. And then what happens is because they're not just all laid together with all party walls, what it does is it allows us to really have a lot of windows on the sides and that just gives it a real, real premium feel, which is what they were going with, with the, the individuals. The Weathervein properties, it's fifty-five and over and they've got experience in constructing these in other municipalities. They're just really good quality, they're very popular with people who often are selling, have sold their house that they had their family, that, you know, the, the kids grew up and then they were looking for a fifty-five and over product, which has a nice, nice sense of quality. And we find that light's very important. These are laid out as two bedrooms and one of the questions earlier from your review engineer was is there a fifteen percent cap on three bedrooms? The answer is absolutely. And later on, we can respond to some of the other comments, but nothing that we saw was, you know, anything that we, we didn't aren't in a position to be able to respond to and we can do that when we get to that point. The next is the exhibit which also shows the same exact floor, floor plans, but also what it does is it shows a rendering, so you get an idea of what the elevation looks like. Again, that's one building that you're looking at, but because of the ability to modulate all the roof lines, put in cubilas and really bring in a lot of depth to the design, they feel very, you know, very independent, very singular. So while we have one building that's constructed of three units, it does have that really nice, nice feel from the street, so that accomplishes what, what they like. Yes, Kevin?
I do have a question. So as far as, will they exceed the firewall standards and soundboard between the individual modules?
Could you answer that?
Probably not, because the spaces that are connected are in a garage space or a four-season room versus it's not real living space, it's not bedroom to bedroom or bedroom to kitchen. And we have, where we have fire protection, we don't have to have that additional
Oh, that's right, you're gonna have the, the fire suppression system. Okay, I was just wondering as far as a fire were concerned, would it entail all of them or would it be cut off at each one? So that would, that would be the fire department's ability to
It's probably not required because it's fire protected. The only reason most developers will do it is if we have bedroom to bedroom or bedroom to kitchen or living room. Then you can hear, you know, the neighbor, but with a sound wall. It's really mostly sound driven, but with the fire protection, we override that and give extra protection.
Sure.
So this, looking at, these are just examples of the product that Weathervein puts together that are now arrayed into, it's the same exact, but it's something that you folks should have in your filing packages. You can see, you know, it's garage doors, so there's, there's plenty of parking with the driveways, et cetera, so it it replicates the feel of the approved singles, but in putting them together as the triplexes, which was requested, so we accomplish all of that. The next has to do with what we're looking at for the mailroom, twenty by twenty, excuse me, is the base of the room, it's got a little overhang on the roof. And then what we, so basically gets us to four hundred square feet. I think it's fifty feet off of the street, so it conforms with the setbacks. And we show six spaces, but your peer review engineer did recommend that we put in handicap, ADA compliant, which we will do, which will bring the number down to five. Because we'll have that, that storage on the side. This layout is constructed, so the width, everything that's there is all, you know, already in place, paved, et cetera. This was something that was discussed with the, the board earlier, but it got to a point where they didn't actually plop the, the building down. You can see on the landscaping, ample landscaping, this is going to be, you know, an entrance component that just is, you know, it's welcoming. It also has a very high utility. They've got these of the other communities. I think of the one in Waymouth, which just everyone stops there and, and people just get into their routines, that's where they see people, that's where they meet neighbors. The other thing that's really good about this is as we all enter the world of Amazon and the delivery vans, it's an opportunity for them to come in. They make a drop and it doesn't, it doesn't clog the community up with, you know, with those vans kinda coming and going. So it winds up being something that, you know, we may see things like this in neighborhoods in the future, just to cut down on all of the, the transport deliveries. So it works well for this community, particularly where it's a fifty-five and over.
And where it is a fifty-five and over, somebody could be handicapped, live there and they would be able to construct a handicap accessible ramp to get into buildings? That would be something that would be done further down the road if, if in the event that they were to, okay, good.
Yeah, the, the layouts, and again, they've, they've built these in other communities, they wind up, I mean, we don't have like, you know, real big differences in the grades, the first floor, et cetera. So they work out well. And if I can just show real quick, this is, those two, we'll do both of them, that's the, the twenty by twenty. And you can see just the overhang, so what we do is we, we wind up having a little bit of a surround porch, so people can come in, it allows people to go out, you know, go inside the building and then come outside and they can kinda hang around and, and say hi. This is the actual structure that is over at Weathervein in Waymouth. Ian, is that the last one we've got, Mark? So going through, what we've done is, it's taken us a while to come in before you guys, we just, we had to do a lot of homework, do a lot of, a lot of meetings in town to make sure that what we were going to propose satisfies to make sure that what we were going to propose satisfies the requirements, the bylaw. We looked at different variations for the connections of the houses, trying to figure out whether we needed the fire suppression, et cetera. And the, the best solution was to just go at this, put in the fire suppression once we figured out how to get the architecture, so that they all connected really well. That was one of the things that we wanted to do, is just, the single-family feel is something that really fits well, and it fits well with the fifty-five and over. The light doesn't hurt, and it took us a little while to get the architecture down, but we've, we've achieved it. And again, we met with the building, you know, the building commissioner, who, who agreed that this achieved, you know, all the goals, all the requirements that he's going to need to be able to issue the permits. With that, if, I don't know if you want to have Andy have comments, or I can address-
Yeah, I, I have a few questions, and then I'll, I'll let Andy speak.
Thank you.
But, okay, so, I don't have the fire department letter. There, there is one that, there is, okay, I don't have that. Yes, if you, if you have, okay. Yeah, I, I- Oh, maybe I do, maybe I do. Let me see.
It looks like an earlier one. I actually left it back.
Okay, yes, I did see this, yeah, it's- I did see that. Okay. There was a couple of things. I, I did talk to Andy today, and I, I did, I did talk to the building inspector, and I spoke to Andy Gleins. And I haven't talked to Amy Quessel about this, although I did ask her to join the, the meeting tonight, be part of this. But, I did talk to the building inspector, and he was fine with the new configuration of the foundations as a minor modification. He, he wasn't sure about the mailroom, and so he thought that, maybe I should speak to Amy about that, whether she felt that that was part of a minor modification or not. I don't know, have you had time to look at these plans? Or, is the, would you consider the mailroom as part of a modification to plans?
I would consider that as part of the minor modification. I did, after the twenty-sixth, I did follow up, and I sent everything that we presented to you folks on October twenty-sixth over to Amy. And I told her that we met with the board, discussed coming back in within some period of time on a minor modification. She didn't send anything back saying, you know, Jeff, you know, it's a problem or anything of that nature. But I think it was something that she took in the ordinary course of, you know, I, I expected she would have gotten back to me, or to you herself, if she didn't agree with it. But I would see that as a minor modification. The reason is that it was discussed before. And also, when you take a look at just the width of everything that's coming in, that was constructed, all the pieces were all in real time, as far as discussions. It's the same, you know, basically the same curb cut that we have. It's the same layout of where the road is that comes down to it. And we see it more of as a ornamental slash utilitarian. If you go into section thirty-nine hundred, it talks about having facilities that are, serve the community good. And we, we thought, we thought that was a home run with respect to the requirements of the townhouse, particularly with respect to one community gathering place. Those probably aren't the exact words, but that's, that's kind of what one of the purposes was. And then, the other had to do with promoting utilitarian function. And we thought that we, you know, we just basically had a home run with, you know, the package delivery. That's how it functions. Over in Weymouth, we've got about, I think, a hundred and fifty? Single-family over in Weymouth, and just having the Amazon truck and the FedEx, et cetera, pull up. It's the same thing. It's got X number of spaces. They pull up and, you know, they go into the building. That alone winds up being, being a plus. And again, it, it fits into that part of thirty-nine hundred. I can, I can cite that more if you want.
I, I, I did talk to Andy Gleins this afternoon, and, and, no, Andy. And I, and we, we spoke about this, and he, he felt that if this didn't affect the drainage or, or anything in the, in the project, so, I, I guess-
I can speak to that.
Yeah, yeah, may as well. Go ahead.
Andy Gleins, professional civil engineer for Fussin' O'Neill, acting on behalf as the town's engineering consultant. Issued a memo earlier today. Apologize, I wasn't able to get that over to the board members and applicants sooner. But, I guess, as Bruce mentioned, in my professional opinion, this building, although there isn't a clear definition of what would be required for a minor modification, or what that threshold is, here, the, it doesn't change the circulation for the neighborhood. There was already an island proposed at that location. They are widening that island and adding the additional impervious area for the building. But on the grand scheme and scale of the project, it really has a negligible impact on the stormwater management approach. And, you know, the building itself isn't requiring any waivers or variances. And I, I agree with the applicant that it's on par and appropriate for the rest of the development that they're proposing.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. The only other comment I have is, we're gonna have to face this at some point in time. The affordable units here, and I know we discussed this before. I think at the last meeting, there was talk about putting the affordable units into the next phases. I guess there's gonna be a phase two and phase three, and-
So, phases, phases two and three are already approved, but it's obvious that we have to come back in. That will be a major modification. And we propose that, you know, we figure out where they're going to be as we pull in the major modification. We may backfill them, you know, depending on the timing back to this, but we just don't, we don't yet know until we get this kind of situated and set for this winter, where they're going to be. But we fully recognize that we have to, we have to comply with all of the requirements with respect to the affordable. Just right now, starting on the construction and getting them going is, is our primary concern. There won't be any difference in construction with respect to whether they're affordable or not. So, it, it's immaterial, at least in the short term.
Okay. The other question is, is, and I still haven't gotten an answer from anybody that I asked this, but I guess you'd have to do some research. These affordable units, are they only available to over fifty-five? Or are they available for all ages?
So, they'll be over-
What's the law?
Yeah, so they'll be, they're basically over fifty-five, so that there's a consistency within the, you know, within the overall development. I don't have experience in your local application of affordable, but I've done forty-B for the state, over fifty-five. And it's, it just winds up being consistent, over fifty-five, as long as it's consistent with the rest of the community, et cetera. That's usually deemed to be a worthy goal, not exclusionary.
All right. I don't know, any other questions by any of the board members?
Well, between building two and four on Fairway Landing and twenty-one and nineteen, it just- There might be a touching corner, but it sure doesn't seem like they're part of a cohesive unit.
And which one is that? I just-
There, there are two offset units.
Oh, I think we saw-
Number eight?
Yeah, yeah, I think we saw this ourselves.
Is that the one we're gonna fix? Number six.
Yeah, oh, what are the numbers? Oh, yeah, you get, you get, okay, I don't have those numbers here.
We did talk about it last time, and you guys were gonna straighten them out.
We're gonna, we're gonna straighten them out, right? They, those are the two that were kind of kitty-corner?
Yeah.
We have some existing utilities in that zone that we'll have to be careful of, but we can, we can align those.
All, all the rest looks the-
The more misalignment we get, the better effect we get on the architecture. We feel like it looks better, because you've got the, the different elevations, you have different planes. So, we've got heights that we're dealing with that vary, and we get the front to back visual.
So, if we can, on that, if we can ask that, we work that out with the building inspector, so that he's, he's, you know, says, yes, that is one cohesive building. I don't know if it's, I don't know if it has to be a hundred percent, or if it's eighty percent, or whatever his determination is, but I'd ask that-
I think it's important that we resolve it now.
So, that's, which is, it's building nineteen and twenty-one?
Building two and four is the most obvious example of it on Fairway Landing.
Two and four?
Two and four. Oh, yeah. So, it's that, with the small corner?
Four.
Yeah, we can, that, that's a, it's really a small piece that we can shift over and address that.
Give it a common wall with the other two properties?
Yeah.
That would be great. And what about nineteen and twenty-one? And can we realign those to-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then that's, then we're, all my other questions are answered. Great. Thank you.
So, quick, quick question also with regards to some of these. So, some of the extra rooms or the connector rooms, you say they're, one side being a, like a, being used as like a four-season room, and the other side coming off, coming up off of the garage.
Right.
Is there soundproofing between those two, or is it just gonna be a standard wall, or what?
Well, it could be potentially a craft room or a workshop, so it probably makes sense for us to add some kind of soundproofing in there, whether it be the two-inch drywall material that we use. It's, it's really quite a separation wall, but it's also a good sound, because it's two inches of dense drywall, gypsum.
Yep. Yeah, because, just thinking of, from personal experience, I tend to make a lot of noise in the garage. And my neighbors probably wouldn't be too happy if the walls were thin, and they're trying to enjoy their space.
I have, I have one last question. Are, are these gonna be heated spaces?
The garage would not be heated.
Right.
But a four-season room would be.
Sure.
I have a question. It's gonna be fifty-five and older, right?
Yes.
So, why can't affordable go in one, two, and three?
Meaning, I'm sorry, apologize.
Well, this is plan one, then you're gonna do another plan?
Yes.
And then another plan, right?
And they may-
So, why can't affordable be in each one, since it's fifty-five and older?
And it, and it can be.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no, it can be. Basically, I think it's six are required, so it could be two in each one.
All right. Well, we, he just asked, and you said maybe in two, not one, so that's why I'm bringing this up.
Right, so it could be. If you, if you folks say there have to be two affordables in each, you know, in each phase, you can do, you know, you can do that. We just ask for the flexibility in the short term, until we understand what we're going to be doing for two and three. You could say, we want it, and then applicant, come on back in when you do your major, if you want to redistribute them somehow. We just think that we know, we know we're going to be in with you folks later, and we're going to have it on a major modification, and we're gonna know, we're gonna know more, and we're gonna be able to show you, so you'll all know more, so we can make an informed decision at that time. And the timing on that is going to be, when are we gonna come in with those? Yeah, so, it's not gonna be like we're gonna come in next year. We're, you know, we expect that we can be bringing those in over this winter. So, we won't have this done, sold out, and say, oh, no, we don't have the opportunity. So, we won't, this isn't something we're looking to avoid, but more like just temporarily kick the can down the road, until we know more about what all of this is gonna look like. We one hundred percent know that there's an affordability requirement that we have to, we have to satisfy. You know, it's just, it's a fact.
Is there a benefit to have them connected, or?
Not, not necessarily. That's something that we, we really like the single units, which is why there was the modification to allow the single units, et cetera. It's, they're just easier.
We worked hard to come up with these designs, and we feel like we've created something where the connection is a benefit to each home. You know, we had looked at iterations that were kind of crazy, just covered roofs and not really serving a purpose. Whereas, this can be a screen porch, four-season room, a workshop, a she shed, a heat shed, whatever somebody might want. Now, now it's something that adds to the, the livability of the home and still lets the, the unit live like a single-family unit, so. We're pleased with what we came up with. It took a lot of time, but-
Yeah.
There it is.
Well, the reason that these are connected, Ellen, is this was before you were on the planning board, but they, they were a single units, but under the townhouse bylaw, it had to be three or more, three to five units connected, to be a townhouse, to qualify as a townhouse. So, that's, that's, and then, so we've, we've asked Weathervein to, to, to connect them. And, and they came up with this plan, and that's why, that's why we've done it, so that it complies with the townhouse bylaw. Okay?
And that's, that's why here we are, going into the winter, saying, we gotta get these going, just 'cause it, it took us a long time to kind of figure it out, solve the sprinkler. And now that we've figured it out, we just, you know, we feel good with it. And that's why, that's why we're a little itchy to get going, so, winter is coming, as they say. Kevin?
All right, any other questions?
Did you have any further recommendations, Mr. Gleins?
Yeah, if you'd like, I can run through a couple of the comments that I had.
Yeah, 'cause we didn't get it, nobody else got a chance to.
Yes. So, referring to the memo that I repaired today, December fourteenth, there is a handful of items on there that I would like the applicant to add, primarily located at the mailroom. They overall consist of pavement markings and signage and a crosswalk. Some of these items have actually been included in the applicant's package and the rendering. As, you know, the crosswalk was noted there. But I just want to make sure those are on the final approved site layout plan as well. I don't think that any of those comments are, you know, a major item that would, you know, preclude the board from voting. But it is something that I'd want to make sure that you included a condition, that the applicant would address those outstanding items and send a revised plan set back to you and me, so that I can formally sign off that those have been added. The, we also did a full review of the drainage. Basically, we did a original review of the stormwater management approach, based on the single-family units. And based on the revised foundation layouts, it kind of reconfigured where they had some of the impervious area on site. But largely, their stormwater management approach, some watersheds that they had delineated, and basically where the stormwater is going, didn't change significantly. They did increase their stormwater management basins to accommodate the stormwater management, water quality and recharge requirements. So, we made a couple notes in here, just that some of the original information we received wasn't updated in the same manner that we had originally, but we were able to get the information we need from their stormwater model to verify that they were meeting those requirements. So, those are A, or three A and three B, so it really isn't any revisions they need to make there. One thing that I was unaware of myself was that this loop road, as I understand from the presentation tonight, was, is already constructed. Is that, is that correct? And the stormwater drainage system, catch basins and pipes already been installed, is that correct? So, I, I did make a comment under two A, recommending that one of the catch basins be reconfigured so it's not located at the end of the driveway. I think that recommendation can still be met just by reconfiguring how the driveway layout is made. And, you know, catch basin can stay where it is. And, you know, catch basin can stay where it is. The second recommendation was regarding a portion of the road that's super elevated. So a typical road has a crown and a center and two gutter lines. They do have one portion of one of their roads on fairway landing that is super elevated, meaning it's just pitched to one, one gutter line. I'm not overly concerned with that condition, but it is preferable to have a crowned road which mitigates risk of run-on from upgrading inside flowing across the road, which really would only be a concern with snow melt conditions. We'd have snow melt on the high side of the road melting and then potentially freezing in the road. But it's something that can be addressed, you know, just with maintenance and just, just the knowledge that that condition exists at that location. The upgrading portion that we're looking at here really only consists of three of the units in their driveways. This would be units thirteen, fifteen, and seventeen on fairway landing. If the applicant could potentially revise the grading or maybe add a smaller yard drain outside the road footprint to pick up some of that run-on, I think that would go a long way to mitigate that risk. But I, I don't believe that the applicant will reasonably be able to revise the road to have a crown at this point. And I do wanna point out that the, it was approved previously with the, the grading approach that was there. So that's why we put that in as a recommendation and not a requirement. And just to speak to the foundation, Fosso Nono doesn't have any concerns or comments regarding the foundation approach and agrees with the building officials' assessment that that will meet the definition of a townhouse and, you know, resolve the previous issue with that, that definition.
Okay. All right, thank you. So out of, out of, how many units are we talking about in this whole project, one, two, and three? Is it fifty-five?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four?
Fifty-four.
That's what was occurred.
And so ten percent has to be affordable?
It was six units.
So it was six units. So it's just something to put out to the planning board members, whether we want to write into this that we have two affordable units on, on this part of the project?
Well, I think it should be conditional that the affordable units be sorted out before final approval of, of occupation, because you are presenting phase two plans and then we should be able to work all of our issues out at that point there?
Yes.
Because phase two is coming into play before phase one's construction is, is going to be completed.
Yeah, before certificates, I think that's reasonable.
I would think that would be reasonable, that we, then they have.
So we just, so.
Would it be fair for us to ask Ms. Questle what her thought is on that?
Yeah, yeah, I will. I, I just thought, the board members, you know, how they felt and.
I would feel good being advised by her.
Yeah.
What our best bet would be.
Do you have anything to add, please? Probably if you, if you could use that microphone there or the one by Andy. If you can move it over so that, just because the notes are gonna be written by the video, so.
Thank you. So Amy Questle, Town Council, as, as you all know. So I have a couple of questions on this project to, to address your concern about the affordability. It most certainly has to be a condition of this phase. I, I do not suggest waiting to sort that out. You wanna have two units required to be affordable on, in phase one. You wanna have two in phase two, you wanna have two in phase three. It's very important because then those units get on your S H I and then you get closer to ten percent. So particularly with the new, with the twenty-twenty census coming out, we're, we need as many affordable units as we can get. So we wanna make a condition that two units are, are within phase one. Is the, may I continue with the rest of my questions?
Yes, yes, please.
It's all stuff that's occurred tonight, or so.
Sure.
Is the mailroom manned?
No.
So then, I don't understand how Amazon, how that helps Amazon. I, I, I don't get mail, I have to go to, I don't get mail at my house. I live in a historic district. They don't let us have mailboxes. So we have to go, no lie, I have to go to a general store to get my mail, and I have a small mailbox. But I, I, mine is a post office, so I have a, my postmaster is there, but they take like a two-hour lunch, but, so, you know, how do you get your packages? Are they just gonna be laid out, you know?
There's access codes for the Amazon delivery people to get into.
Right.
Homeowners also have the access code.
Right.
You might know that if you get an Amazon package under the hub, you get a notice at your email or my email that you get a package, you get a code, go in and punch in, or the post office has.
So fifty-five-year-olds have to run down to the mailbox to get their package? If not, it's just, is it laying on the ground? That's, I'm kinda thinking logistics.
It's inside the building.
Right, but where in the building?
There'll be a, a hub system, mailboxes that are, they'll be their own P O boxes that they access. The postmaster would go in, open up from the backside of the U S postal stuff, load that. People come in, usually what happens in these communities, people drive home, they stop there, they get their mail and they go.
So, so I don't, I don't, I mean, I'm not, I don't think I'm presenting it correctly to you. So for example, I, I have my dog food delivered.
Sure.
By Amazon, okay? I have a Saint Bernard, so my dog food is huge. So that can't fit in my mailbox.
No, but there's usually a general place inside the building that it could drop, so it's locked from the public.
Right, but it is open to all the other residents.
That's right.
Correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And the other thing too is that I'm not, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but Amazon also doesn't always deliver to post office boxes, so it will deliver, it has to deliver to residents. So I'm not, I'm not really sure that Amazon drivers, et cetera, will be gone forever. And, and I don't think that's for any of us. And so the other, the other question that I had, I think that, I think that Mr. Robinson already asked it, but I didn't get, I wasn't sure about the answer, is that, so to have a townhouse, under the state definition, the units have to be separated by a firewall, but.
That's not true.
It is, I have the definition. So there has to be a firewall in between the, in, in between the units. But, but you had said there, there doesn't have to be because of your sprinklers.
Correct.
Okay. So they're not firewalls, they're just regular?
I think what we said was, if there's, if we have a, for instance, if we have a garage to a living space, we'll put in that sound separation wall. But if it's a garage to garage, I don't see a need to have a sound wall between garages. So that's, that seems to make sense, but it's not a big area, so if it's an requirement, that can be done at all locations.
Mr. Gasky, was that, that satisfied your question? Because I wasn't really sure about being, you said you were allowed in the garage. So it's only between a garage and a living space?
Right, right. Well, that, that was my, yes, that was my concern, is that it.
Because that, that should be a condition. And.
But I would be, I would be concerned that there wasn't a firewall between a garage and a garage. Because wouldn't that be where a fire would generally start, is in a garage?
But he, but it's sprinkled.
Okay, that's right. That's right, I keep forgetting that.
Yeah, me too, I kept forgetting it too.
I think this, though, all those issues are under the jurisdiction of, you know, it's, it's the building code.
Yeah, I would say, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, do you guys wanna go there?
And then, will these be condominiums?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, and then, I guess my, you know, my, my, my final question is that, so with regard to the, the mailroom, you know, making, is this still a minor modification or not? I had, I went through the bylaw and there is a section, there's a section in your bylaw that allows for a minor site plan review. There is nothing in your bylaw that allows for a minor modification to a site plan.
It's just a modification, yeah.
However, you guys, you know, you do have a section that says that if there's not more than two thousand square feet of building or ten parking spaces, it can be considered a minor modification. So, or a minor site plan, it doesn't need a public hearing. So I, I think that we would be, we would be fine if we were to, to liken it to that. So provided, this is a four-hundred-square-foot building, there's now five parking spaces, there were six. So it appears that it would, it would, in any event, it would come under a minor site plan. I guess the biggest question that I have that goes back to an email that I had sent to the town back in August, which is that forty-eight, section nine, which allows, allows for special permits, does not provide for any modification to special permits. And so therefore, the courts and, and our, our firm has taken the position that a modification to a special permit has to have a public hearing, it has to go through the same process as a, as a regular, as a regular special permit, starting from a new. So I, I guess that the applicant should explain why they don't need to go through the whole, the, the, the actual process of a new special permit or, you know, amended special permit, but why they don't have to go through the, through the public hearing process for that.
Yeah, I can do that. We've been amending special permits. I've been doing this for thirty-three years. No one's ever questioned that or raised that. There are cases that talk about whether something rises to the level of a major modification versus a minor modification, and we're nowhere near those. I've not been in cases where a minor modification or a special permit has been questioned or, really been asked to cite cases, et cetera, so.
So unfortunately, it's, it's the monument in case, which, which states that it's, it's really, it's only clerical or scrivener's errors that can be corrected with a, with a minor modification. I guess that I was hoping that council would have perhaps acknowledged, maybe we could go through the original special permit and if the original special permit allowed for a certain amount of dwelling units, then if this special, if this modification, you know, stands, you know, creates the exact same amount of units, you know, the argument could be that the special permit use, which the use was for however many dwelling units, didn't change. Something, something along those lines maybe, but there is no question that special permits are not allowed to be modified. There's nothing in, in section forty-eight, section nine that allows it. There are the three cases, there's the mon, it is the monument in case, and then the two cases that, that came out of that that basically say that the only way to modify a special permit without a public hearing notice is, or a public hearing, you know, section eleven, public hearing, is, you know, a clerical or a scrivener's error. So I think that, you know, to, to effectuate what, what needs to be done tonight, we would need some kind of argument that the special permit use that was allowed has not changed.
Oh, okay. Oh, I can do that. What was the nature of the change in monument in?
It was, it was a clerical error, so.
Okay, okay.
I, I, I've gone through this with Adam Brodsky from your firm and I, I've given him the three cases before, so he has them, so.
So, so we can go back in. That was part of, and I apologize because we didn't, we kinda cut through some of the early preliminaries that we did back in October twenty-sixth. So your questions that you ask are, are basically on. So what happened, the, the modified, well, excuse me, the, the previously modified special permit, which was granted by this board, which we now are seeking to come in, basically allowed for the single, single family on the townhouses to come in, in again, the townhouse district. There were twenty-four which were approved, and what we're doing here is we're not doing anything to change any of, any of the roadway, any of the utilities, any of that nature, so that all stays in place. It's all constructed, it's all constructed with your, you know, hydrants, fire lines, everything. There have already been four building permit issued with respect to the foundations. And what we're doing is we're keeping those in exactly the same place as we go forward to satisfy the town's request that we solve the issue with respect to the townhouse. There's no change in the number of dwelling units, so we still have twenty-four dwelling units that are here subject to the thirty-nine-hundred, your townhouse section. What we're doing is we're merely arraying them so that instead of twenty-four separate dwell, structures, it winds up being eight separate structures. There's no change in the use, it's fifty-five and over. This, you know, residential use, you know, bedrooms, everything remains the same with respect to the cap on the number of three bedrooms, et cetera. We're still gonna have two bedrooms predominantly. There's absolutely no change in the use whatsoever. And, you know, garages were featured before, garages are again featured. So what it is, it's an array of sliding these buildings around so that they aggregate in threes. And, you know, whether it's scrivener's error or whatnot, repeatedly, we're in positions where, for example, let's say that there's a special permit which is granted, something in the field doesn't work, doesn't fit, we have field changes. This is, you know, probably somewhere in the nature of a field change. To have to go and have an entire public notice to be able to aggregate the structures, I just, I don't believe that it's necessary. And, you know, again, this board has done it before. We are going in and we're having a minor modification to a prior modification of the special permit. So with that, in advance of the excellent points, we will, on phases two, phases three, we will do those as part of a major modification. The major modification will require, you know, full, full plan sets, butter notices and things like that. But for this one, here we are in Carver, December twenty, twenty-one. We've got two structures that are unheated, we've got, you know, building department that's itching to start issuing the building permits so that we can get things weather tight and get this place wrapped up, preferably before the market takes too many twists and turns. We would request that you folks grant that additionally with respect to the two, two affordables. I did not think about the, the housing inventory, so that is an advantage for the town. And that's, if that's your preference, and I would suggest that it is, that's fine. We can include that of, you know, as well as part of, as part of conditions for the decision. Everything that Andy had kinda mentioned, we've got his letter, nothing in here really seems, you know, everything that he points out, it's something that we can address. The super elevation on the road is all in place, it is all built. We can speak with him about, one, we talked about putting in like a drain on the, the road which would help with the slow, snow melt. Also, we'll go back in and make sure that the O and M with respect to the winter, you know, treatment of the roads, et cetera, that there's special attention there. So there are ways that we can address that. Because it's a condominium association as opposed to just a bunch of, you know, homeowners who are not associated, it allows us to achieve that. That basically goes into all the contracts for plowing, et cetera. So that's something that we've got a good track record of being able to comply with O and M requirements. There are also O and M requirements with respect to drainage, you know, et cetera. So with a condominium, these are all documents that we'll be all putting together.
So the town, the town wouldn't be responsible for the plowing?
No, correct, correct. So that's the other thing that's really good about this. The attraction of these communities is, is huge. The fifty-five and over really helps with, you know, school population requirements. Also being condominium, we're having the condominium roads in, you know, everything, it's interior. That cost basically goes on the community and they can, you know, they can make sure that it's, to help to the standard that they want.
They average O A fees?
Uh, yes. What do we have in?
They average about three hundred a month. They average about three hundred a month.
What about handicap people? If they wanted something to be built specifically for them, would they have to ask the builders to?
We do that on?
Yeah, we would customize, you know, the, the good pot hands, good soils, you can set the foundation deep and recess the first floor framing if it's necessary, so they can almost, they're right in the wheelchair if they're, uh, in that situation.
And they've got, I mean, they, they basically build these, um, themselves, so when he talks about just customize, that's another thing, um, you go into a unit, you know, they're, they're really, the fit of finish is really nice, that's a big attraction to people. It's that whole, I love my house, it's too big, um, you know, the trade-off on these for three, you know, three hundred or whatnot a month and having, you know, new construction, somebody's doing landscaping, et cetera, it just, it winds up being really good, um, a good niche in the market.
And how do they figure out what's affordable?
Uh, the, the affordable has to do with, um, there, there are tables that are, uh, basically, um, published, uh, by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and it has to do with median income numbers, and then, um, there are different, different designations for different communities. Um, believe it or not, affordable is universally, it's, it's a lot higher than people think. Um, but that's the way that the numbers, um, come out here in Massachusetts, the cost of living is really high.
Is it different per town?
Yeah.
So it's eighty percent of the, of the area median income? So it's wherever your area is, but it's only, it's only eighty percent, so, so these are not affordable. These are, you know.
Just not as high.
Exactly, and, um, and we will put a condition, the condition will be that, that there will be two affordable units in each phase, and those affordable units, their condo fees will also be adjusted to be affordable also, so, so they're adjusted according to the, the purchase price. Um, so we make that a condition, we'll make, um, we'll make that the condo, condominium documents have to be approved by town council as, as a condition. Um, we'll make that the roads are, will never become public as a condition, um, and that trash will be private as a condition. Um, and then the other is, and I'm, I'm, I know, I, I feel like I'm being dense on this, but I'm sorry. So are we looking for a firewall in between garage and a living space, or just like a soundproof wall?
Soundproof is all, is my biggest concern.
That's up to the building inspector, isn't it?
And the, and the laws.
So, so how would we, how would we condition it? So, because right now, it appears that they don't need anything, they don't need a fi, a fireproof, they don't need a firewall because they have sprinklers, but they're offering to do something in between the garage and the, the, uh, gar, a garage and a living space, so what would that be?
Well, I would do it, uh, soundproof between living and other room, you know?
Two-inch drywall?
Uh, it's called two-inch shaft wall.
Two, it, what, what is it called?
Shaft wall.
Two S H A F T. Okay, so we'll make that a condition also.
Now, the, um, affordable units are in perpetuity, correct?
They are, they're in perpetuity, and they need to be, um, dispersed throughout the development, and they need to, you, you're not allowed to know, you're not allowed to, if you look at the, if you look at the development, you're not supposed to know the difference between, of, of demarcating and affordable. They have to have the same, um, I don't know if, well, if it's a, I don't know if you're providing appliances, but they have to have all the same appliances. There's, there's guidelines that.
If they have a garage, if everybody has a garage, they have a garage.
Yeah, so there's guidelines that D H C D puts out about those, but, um, in these kind of developments where, where it's, um, these are, these would be called a local action unit, um, an L A U, um, because this is not a forty B development, um, there's a lot more flexibility, so, um, so, but yeah, it should be fine.
Okay. Anything else?
That's why she's got our back.
Uh, I'm sorry, were you asking me if there was anything else?
Yeah, well, no, I just asked the planning, just the, the planning board members, I know that you were busy there.
Uh, no, I don't, I marked down my questions and that was, um.
So we don't have a decision written, of course, tonight?
Well, we haven't answered the question in regards to as whether special permits not having the ability to be minor modifications, needs a new public hearing.
Oh, oh, that's right, we, we didn't, uh, yeah, I just, we have to see how Amy feels about that. Have, was, was the attorney, did, did he give you a, a, uh, response that, uh,
So, so that, that is, that, um, that, that's not up to me, that's up to you guys, so, um, if you guys are satisfied that the, that the, um, so actually, it's, it's, um, I mean, you can check it, it's in M C, it's in the, um, M C L E's, I just quickly pulled up the zoning manual, it's, um, section five, uh, point nineteen, so it is, um, is there a, um, where is it, it's, um, oh, is it a reversal of a conscious decision? So if it's not, um, so it says the law is clear that the board has inherent power without holding a, a further public hearing to correct an inadvertent or clerical error in its decision, so that the record reflects its true intention, so long as the correction does not constitute a reversal of a conscious decision. So that's in the, that's the monument in case, that's the site. Um, and so if, if the number of units isn't changing, the infrastructure is not changing, um, you know, I mean, i- if anything changed, it's the requirement of the two affordable units, which is what this board is putting on the applicant, um, and that's a positive change. Um, and then again, with regard to the, um, with regard to the mailroom, I don't think that that would change your special permit decision, you know, in, in, in a great effect. Um, I was more concerned about the special, the site plan, keeping that a mo, a minor site plan, which now that I know it's four hundred square feet and parking, so I think that's fine, but that's up to you guys.
Well, all I can say about this, and I thank you for, for being here and helping us with this tonight, and, uh, and for all your comments. I do know that, uh, when this was proposed years ago as a, a regular subdivision, we did have some people, some neighbors, uh, come in, and, uh, they were, uh, not happy that they would have drainage basins and houses up against the back of their property lines. Um, since then, when the modifications came in and, and then it became single units, believe we did have a public hearing on that, but we had no neighbors whatsoever, everybody was quite happy with it because they did move, uh, the drainage away from homes, they did move the units away from people's property lines, and, um, actually, I, I thought that it was a much better configuration for all, so we, we had no unhappy neighbors. Um, I think at this point, that I think even if we did, you know, make this a public hearing, I don't know if we'd really have much response from the neighbors. We didn't really have much response when it became an over fifty-five community to begin with. So, and I look at this as a improvement to, to what we originally, uh, had approved. Uh, I think now the units, uh, they're, they're within the definition of a condominium, um, three to five units, and they're all joined together by foundations, so, um, I, I just see that this is, is just a big plus, for everyone, and I know it's, it's been, uh, difficult because, um, this once was approved as single units, and now to, to have come about and have changed this whole project, I, to make it so that it, it does, uh, is within our bylaws, I think that it's, it's a big plus, so, um, that's the way I feel about it, I, I think that it, it should be approved as a minor modification. I don't know if any other, uh, the board members have any other.
I don't think we could vote on it tonight without a decision.
You want to see a decision?
Right, because we need to know what the conditions are, there's been a few conditions set tonight, and I know Amy has a few, I, I know I had one, and John and Kevin had one, and, uh, we want to make sure that, uh, we follow up on Fuss O'Neill's recommendations to the satisfaction of the board.
I don't know how everybody feels about that, do you want to see the conditions written out? And, and then, and then we can approve the project with the, the conditions. I mean, if you could write out, if the, could the conditions be ready for our next meeting?
Yes.
And if we, if you could come up with the conditions, uh, yeah, so that we could, and then email them to us so that we could, we could see them and, and then, uh, we could, uh, vote on this, take a vote on it at next meeting.
So you said that your next meeting was the twenty-eighth, correct?
Could be the twenty-eighth.
So, um, so even if you, um, even if you voted tonight, you still have the fourteen days to issue, to file your decision with the town clerk, so they're, they're not losing any time. So, um, if we, if we came in with a draft decision on the twenty-eighth, we sorted through all the conditions, and then we filed it, you know, then, then we vote, you voted, we would have fourteen days to file it with the town clerk, but we could file it the next day.
All right, and, and then also.
There's no time lost.
It'd be, you could update the plans so, and then send them off to, uh, Andy Glynn so that he could review, make sure that all his comments were incorporated in the, in the drawings.
And I, I think you were gonna fix, um, Mr. Shea had mentioned, there was two units that he, you were gonna fix?
Yeah.
So you could do that too?
Sure.
And then, and then you have everything wrapped up on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so we can do that, we'll just have to audible on which of your comments survive or which ones we already change, in which case we'll pull them out, so we'll just, we'll stay in touch on that.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, oh, oh, that's right, you made a modification about the soundboard in between the units, you know, we had the discussion about that. So I think that incorporated pretty much all the comments that the planning board members had, and, and, and your comments also. So, okay, so if you come up, if you write the decision.
Yeah, I will.
So, so that we can review it.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure it'll be fine, and hopefully we can approve this at our next meeting after we look at the, the conditions.
So if any, um, if any members have any, um, conditions, if they want to send them to Bruce individually, don't send them to anybody else, just to Bruce, and then, um, I can incorporate them.
Okay.
So that'll be December twenty-eighth?
December twenty-eighth is, uh, is our next, uh, meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Great, have a happy holiday, everyone will see you, uh, in between holidays.
Thank you very much. Have a, have a good Christmas holiday.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, and thank you for the advice on L A, that's gonna be my call from the.
I hope I didn't scare him away.
No, 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 he was, um, no, he was very, he's, he's, he's an adult, he's, he's, you know, he's a very bright guy, and I just, it just, I was like, you, it can't, it can't be, and when I heard you saying it, I just said, sounds like it is, so I'm gonna call him up and tell him where, where does he have to stay, in Beverly Hills, you said?
Yeah, Bel, Bel Air.
Bel Air.
Bel Air, ten million Beverly Hills, hundred million Bel Air.
We'll see if he can pull that off, thanks again, everyone, we appreciate it, thank you. I almost took it, thanks.
All right, next, uh, so we just finished Weathervein, so we have the, uh, public hearing continued on the application of J C M Carver Acquisitions LLC requesting a special permit for fast food, a drive-in restaurant, and site plan review uh, pursuant to sections twenty-two-hundred use regulations, twenty-three-hundred dimensional requirements, twenty-three-thirty multiple principal structures, uh, thirty-one-hundred site plan review, forty-three-hundred water resource protection, fifty-three-hundred special permit and other pertinent sections of the Carver zoning bylaw. This project's located at two eighty-seven Tremont Street, assesses map ninety-four, lot five dash zero dash R to demolish an existing five-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot squib building and construct a new fifty-foot by twenty-five-foot ice cream shop building by, and a ninety-by-fifty-foot storage garage. Well, actually, well, we'll, I guess we'll discuss that landscaping and parking, properties located in the general business district. All right, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members.
Andy?
I'm Paul Fazerski from Maryland Engineers and the senior project manager, professional engineer on this project. Uh, we have been through quite a bit to date to get here, we've been at the technical review board hearing. Uh, we've addressed all the technical review board comments, we've had it reviewed by FIRE three times, FIRE Department's all set with the project, we've had it reviewed by, um, Fuss and O'Neill. Um, we're pretty much satisfied all their comments, they've looked at it a few times. Uh, we were asked earlier, early on to, uh, go to the Board of Health and then D E P on the particular project. We did go to the Board of Health, which we referred to D E P, we went to D E P in Boston, we received a determination of flow assessment, and, uh, we are presently, also, I remember we brought out page it, uh, we need to also address the, uh, water withdrawal, which our flow assessment is in line, so it doesn't come out of line with the actual water withdrawal. So now we're waiting for determination from D E P on the water aspect of it. Um, the property itself, it contains about two acres, um, it formerly had a free bedroom home on it, it presently has the ice cream shop, as you know, and a small storage building. Um, you can see on this particular, so, this layout plan here, um, we've incorporated the changes that were asked by Andy and the FIRE department, which was to make sure that we had adequate access in and out of the site from the ladder truck that the town has. It does in fact have that, we have adequate ADA accessible spaces, walkways throughout the site. Um, we've eliminated the two water spaces near the middle island there, allow for internal circulation. Uh, we have a compliant loading section, um, the other thing that we incorporated, um, is a access around three sides for FIRE. Um, we are proposing a grass pageto system, which we sent the information to the FIRE department, we've used this frequently. Um, I've used it up in Hingham, it back of the condos, um, and it's a very heavy-duty type system. Your typical fire truck, um, is, this'll, this'll handle a fire truck, and then a hundred and ten thousand pounds driving around, and it's grassed over, so you don't even notice it. Um, we're preserving the picnic area on back, if you've looked at the landscape plans, we have extensive landscaping proposed for the facility, um, we'll, we'll, we'll plan around and go with the stormwater management system. You can see according to the blue areas, we have an extensive stormwater management system. Under existing conditions, you have a gravel parking lot that's contained an interim well at protection area. The entire site is contained within an interim well at protection area. There's absolutely no treatment for the existing stormwater on site, and presently it discharges offsite about six-point-five-seven C F S or in a higher frequency storm, the hundred-year storm event. And that's using the Cornell method, which typically those storm events in, that are, um, about fifty percent higher than you see with the T V forty charts. So, what we have for a stormwater management system is this system fully complies with D E P stormwater management area for critical areas, interim well at protection area. We have, um, the stormwater segregated for the roof runoff, completely designed for no discharges of a hundred-year frequency storm. We also have, um, incorporated sediment traps, we have concentrated shallow flows along the parking lot. We've incorporated, uh, grass swales, vegetated filter strip. You can see how we have a separation between the edge of the pavement to the actual glue area, so that's the vegetated filter strip, which will help attenuate the flow slown down at the sediment control prior to go, going into and entering the bioretention rain garden. Some of the amenities that the stormwater discharge system offers is that there's no untreated stormwater discharges from the site, in fact, we're pretty much shutting the water off from leaving the site, these are, these are pretty substantial, in fact, these are the biggest rain gardens that I've ever put in, and. And one of the things I like about this is this is a good, what I would call a country drainage system that provides a high level of treatment. To talk about some of the amenities, sediment traps require two hundred and one cubic feet. We've got five hundred and thirty-two cubic feet. That's two hundred and sixty-seven percent above what's required. Bio retention rain garden is two thousand and four cubic feet required. We're providing twenty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-three cubic feet. That's eleven and a half times above the standard requirement. And it just goes on and on. With the recharge, it's twelve hundred and two square feet, cubic feet. We've got twenty-three hundred and thirty-three. That's nineteen times what's required. A lot of quality volume. Two thousand and four cubic feet. Again, we've got the twenty-three thousand plus cubic feet. That's eleven and a half times. Let's talk about a little, about pollution attenuation. Total suspended solids, the requirements eighty percent removed. This is a very effective system. Provides ninety-three percent total suspended solids removal. And, uh, we counted that with, with just the, the rain gardens itself provide ninety percent TSS removal. We have, um, all those standards, we exceed the requirements for the critical area I mentioned earlier, the interim well at detection area. We have a during construction control program that's been submitted for this to take care of, make sure they control the sediment, the stormwater areas are put in properly. And we have a long-term O and M plan for this. Um, I've already mentioned, we're completely segregating the roof runoff from the site. And, um, talk about the individual components, the sediment traps. That helps slow the velocity of the stormwater, allows the sediment to pool, be removed. We have sharp crested whirs over this with rip up on each side, so it slows it down, but it provides for a nice controlled release. We have the vegetated filter strip that I mentioned previously, slows the runoff, removes the sediment. It's a low and easy maintenance area. And if, both of those provide a nice pre-treatment measure prior to the stormwater entering the rain gardens itself. You can see on the bottom left, we have a nice long swell before it enters the rain garden. And then let's talk a little bit about the treatment which is provided by the bio retention rain garden. It provides groundwater recharge. It provides ninety percent TSS removal in and of itself. And DDP shows that it provides nitrogen removal, phosphorus and metals in addition to TSS, which we already mentioned. Now, the soils and plants that will be used in this facility, the treatment matting and everything will be in full compliance with DDP's program to ensure that that runoff is captured, it's treated, it's absorbed. And the one thing that I like is when you have the trees in here, this also helps cool the runoff. And if you've seen on the landscaping plan, we do have extensive landscaping throughout the area that's gonna help keep the parking lots cool, help with that particular aspect. The other thing that we're very aware of is to try to make sure that we are protecting our neighbors in this area. That's why we're incorporating a lot of what we've done here. And if you look at the top left above the rain garden there, we've proposed a swell in there. The reason I think that swell's important is because, um, it's natural runoff that's coming down. So I don't need to mix that in with the treated stormwater runoff. Let's that, let that continue and, and go into the wooded areas it presently does on the, on the present day. Could you point that out, please?
Sure.
On the plan?
Sure.
Right here, you have the wooded area. This all slopes from here to here. This whole sector that comes down here will get into that swell and continue down into the natural area here. And this is, this is the fire truck area that comes down right over through here. And these are heavy duty systems. Now, um, the other thing that we've asked for is to provide, the only real wave we're looking for is a ten foot waiver around the ice cream shop for the, for the landscaping. We've got it everywhere else. We have extensive landscaping around here, but I don't want to push that building back on the lot another ten feet. I want it to preserve the natural area. I've got the hundred foot zone one radius that I want to protect. I've got an area over there with a cooler on the door, if you look at the architectural plans. To get in the facilities there, I provided two ramps in that area. And they will be ADA ramps even though they don't have to be in that area because we have the ADA spaces on the main frontage, which is the south side, so they get ease of delivery. Deliveries are off hours, so you're not gonna have conflicts with the customers that come in and out of here. And I think that's pretty much it. I know, um, Andy had a few items he can talk about, but I thi- think, um, we've got confirmation from the fire department, they're all set. We've got confirmation from the building commissioner. He's all set with the plans. So we're still working the issues, but I thought it would be important to come in now, um, to give you an update, see where we're at. We've pretty well, I think, addressed everything that we possibly can today. Be happy to address any current concerns you might have. Andy, did you have anything to add to this?
Um, I guess, uh, just a, a couple items. As the applicant mentioned, um, we've actually already gone through a couple iterations of this with them. Attended the TRC meeting as well as issued a, an initial memo, uh, and they already issued a response to comment. So the revised submission today has already been through one review, um, by us as well as the fire department building official. Largely the applicant has addressed, uh, our concerns. You know, uh, obviously he was, uh, able to speak very thoroughly about the stormwater management approach, uh, in general. They're in conformance with the local and state, uh, regulations for that. And I have copied Brooke Monroe with Conservation Commission, Conservation Agent, um, on our comments. Correct me if I understand, you have a, uh, hearing with the Conservation Commission coming up in January?
Correct. And I've also copied Brooke with everything that we've submitted to the planning board and Andy and she has.
I don't think, um, CONSCOM will have any concerns with the current stormwater management approach. They, um, followed that, all the recommendations that, uh, we previously made on our end. There, um, is some important things, um, that will need to be included in, um, a decision letter, uh, which I assume will be prepared, um, and reviewed at a later date. But we did, uh, specifically include the section of some findings that, um, we want to make sure they're in that letter specifically pertaining to having, uh, multiple principal structures on the same lot. So, uh, the applicant is meeting those requirements. And a couple of those are deferred to the building official and the fire, um, department. But, uh, we just wanted to reiterate in our letter, so it was all compiled in one spot. So specifically referring to section, uh, two thousand three hundred and thirty. And there are two waivers, uh, that the applicant is requesting. One under section three thousand two hundred and forty-one is for interior parking landscaping. We recommend approval of that because the, uh, number of parking spots that they have in each row, um, is six or less. Uh, they do have, um, perimeter landscaping around the lot. And adding, uh, additional interior landscaping, um, in my opinion would hinder, uh, emergency access around the lot without really providing much benefit to, um, the overall aesthetics or intent of that bylaw section. And there's also a waiver request under section three thousand two hundred and fifty-one. Again, related to landscaping, as the applicant mentioned, uh, ten foot wide landscaping, uh, in front of the building. This is something that if the board wished, I, I think the applicant could address, as I mentioned, by relocating the proposed building. One thing to note though, uh, in addition to, uh, approaching further back on open space, uh, I think it would create more of a pinch between the buildings, uh, which would in turn have a, uh, impact to, uh, emergency access around the buildings, which would require the second building to also be shifted. So I, in my opinion, I don't think it's necessary to, uh, adjust the building layout to get that, uh, ten foot strip on that edge. That said, um, if the board wished to have the building shifted slightly so they could get maybe some landscape strip, but not a full ten feet, you know, that, that could, um, definitely be something that the applicant could physically do with their site layout. And there's a couple minor, uh, grading tweaks, um, just on, um, just some additional spot grades I think we'll clear up. But nothing that would change the overall grading approach or, um, stormwater, uh, runoff characteristics of this proposed site.
All right, thank you, Andy. Mr. Chairman, if I might? What's that? If, if I might? Sure. Okay. I- i- in reference to, um, Andy's comments, we did also reply to each one of those. And the uses, uh, we specified, so there is no question that it, it's retail sales, it's ice cream, it's, it's take, only ice, ice cream only. We have a retail component in the larger building out back and in, in, and then the two bays in the back, that, that's not storage. That's gonna be craftsmen tradesmen only. It cannot and never will be any land uses with potentially higher pollutant loads. It can't be because we're in a critical area. So it can only be a small craftsmen's, a carpenter, or an electrician, or something like that. And what we have done is we've got floor drains planned for every one of the whole building in case the retail ever should go away. And we have a non-hazardous dual industrial hazardous, uh, non-hazardous waste holding tank in the front that has alarms on the inside and in between the walls and is fully automated. Building heights are added. We comply with the building heights. We've, we've talked to the building department and the fi- the building commissioner and the fire department on the positioning of the buildings, and they are both satisfied with that. Uh, we will comply with, fully with the fire department with whatever they want for fire protection measures on this facility. Uh, we talked about the fire truck. No need to talk about that. We talked about landscaping. I think that's all I have. I don't want to be repetitive. Thank you. Is, is the proposed retail store gonna be associated with the ice cream? It's supposed to be, yes, sir. Oh, okay. So they're gonna sell ice cream? Well, they sure t-shirts in support, you know, things of that nature. I mean, they might have other retail items, but it's, 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 if you look at the architectural plans on this, this is really, I think personally, gonna be a destination, location to come to. It's New England style, barn style architecture. It's an expensive project. And the same with the building out back, with a nice big classy sliding doors on it, um, preserving the seating area. So, yeah. And the building inspector felt that this, the proposed use of the, of the building out back as a retail store and then two craftsmen tradesmen's units was, was an allowable use in this. He said he was completely fine with the plan, sir. Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chet, through you. Do you mind, I ask him, so you mentioned the architectural, um,
They're in the back, Kevin.
They're in the back, so I want to make sure, um, will they be like? Will they be like, you mentioned barn style? So will they, the craftsmen tradesmen buildings that are gonna be out back, are they going to like replicate, uh, one another?
Yes, they, yes, they should. And we've got the applicant here.
That personally, I'd like to see, um, the architectural renderings that are gonna be on that. What is gonna be included, uh, and how it's gonna be built? I like the idea hearing that it will be built in conjunction with the retail store, so they will look alike.
Mm-hmm. That's the goal.
All right. Um, so I just had a question, and this might, this might help me out with a couple of things. So there are four occupancies. So, um, two of the existing are gonna be removed. Is that true? The, um, existing building where the ice cream is being sold is being removed? And is the existing garage being removed?
Correct.
Okay. The shed, the shed is new construction?
No, the shed's there. That shed's going away, isn't it, Jason?
It can go away.
Yeah, okay, so the shed's gonna be removed?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so that answers that question. And then, of course, I wanna, I wanna make this very specific, that I would like to see walls, interior walls on the craftsmen tradesman buildings, so they are three separate craftsmen tradesmen spaces for other, um, you know, craftsmen trades to be, you know, allowed into the town. I don't want to see that as one big building.
Oh, no.
Meaning I want, meaning I want walls and, I don't see an interior, um, direct wall. I see a dotted line, so I just wanted to make sure that those would be, um, individual?
Yes.
Three individual spaces? Okay, and, when you do give us the architectural renderings of the craftsmen tradesman building, you will include any of the overhangs, whether they'll have cupolas, um, windows, doors, so on?
It's shown in the, it's shown in the back pages.
I haven't gotten that far.
Yeah, if you go to the, if you go to the back pages, there's a rendering of, uh, each one of the-
Just wanted to make sure I got my questions in before I looked at it.
Yeah, yeah. I think it pretty much answers your questions.
All right then. Well then, I will stifle.
No, it's all right.
Is this gonna be open year round? The ice cream shop, I mean, that in?
Probably not. I mean, just, just the way it is now, just a new one.
So the ice cream is not gonna, probably not gonna be open all year long, but the craftsmen tradesmen? And will the store be open all year long?
Yeah, I, I don't know what type of store is gonna go in there, whether it's something that is directly for us or a different nice retail shop that's a future applicant's, you know, possibly consider that, that building will be there on credit. It can be, but we probably will not run this as well.
Just want to say to the board members that, um, probably, I, I mean, I don't know how everybody feels, but you might want to take a, uh, do a site visit if we could, uh, I don't know how the other board members feel about that, if they want to do a site visit or not. You could have the buildings marked out, you know, the four corners of the, or as best they can with the existing buildings there. You could have the four corners of the, of the, uh, the new ice cream shop plus the four corners of the craftsmen tradesman store, uh, unit marked out. And also maybe the islands in front, so that we can just kind of see what that's gonna look like and where the entrances are gonna be.
And did you say the home is gonna stay there?
No, home's been gone. They did, they brought them down. So, so what I was trying to say is, is that, um, we can do a site visit after these, after this is marked out, and then we'll continue this to another meeting anyway, so, um, and make sure that all Andy's comments are addressed and, 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 uh, you know, we can take a look at what it's gonna look like. I don't, I don't know if Attorney Quesal has anything to add to this. Haven't looked at this. And I know that when I asked you to come tonight, it was basically for Weathervein.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I, I do have a couple of things I'd like to ask. In front of the proposed tradesman's storage bay number two, uh, where the fire department accesses to the rear insides of the two buildings, I noticed there's, uh, two parking spaces there. What if there's a fire? I mean, how are they gonna access the rear side or rear of the other building through?
You could take the paint, painting out of that.
Okay, I, I would think that would be-
Yeah.
-advisable. Also, I have questions. I don't, I don't really have a problem with the delivery bay as long as it is only for active use only, but, um, your dumpster there, is that for the entire facility or for just the ice cream shop?
We were planning that for the entire facility.
I, I would think it'd be who view to find a place that is further away from the public view or find some way to properly screen it for all four seasons. Trees, not, and I, I don't think, uh, a chain link fence is gonna be sufficient for that. I'm curious as to why you've put the building so close on the eastern side of the property that the twenty-five foot landscaping setback to the neighboring property is, is not there? Or, or limited in its-
Where are we talking on the plan?
Where are we talking on the plan?
Uh, maybe I'm mistaken, I'm looking at the plans here. 'Cause I'm looking at a thirty-seven point two foot line off the back of the proposed tradesman building and it looks, it looks like that's your lot line, but I, I don't see where the twenty-five foot side landscaping bump buffer might go or, or what? For what reason or, or how would you defend not putting it there?
Um, I thought it was a ten-foot landscaping strip if I'm not mistaken.
I, I might be, I might be wrong, uh, is there more than twenty-five spaces? Is, is, am I a little off here?
I don't know, but...
I, I think it's, I think it's ten, ten feet.
Well, all right, so, uh, you have a side...
We have that.
Side, uh, yeah, setback of twenty-five feet, maybe that's what I was looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Um... But I can, I'll, I'll double, I'll double check on, on that myself, too. Spaces for fire access. And how many proposed parking spaces are here? Minus the two, I think that you, uh, were saying...
Uh, we require twelve, that'll bring us down to thirty.
Okay, great, so over the, the twenty-five. No, that was, that was really all of my comments in regards to it off the...
Where would you, uh, put snow?
We've designated snow removal areas on, on the plan itself. Uh, we've got the landscaped areas there, we've got some down there, the island here, we've got some off to the right side that we could put it. Um, so there are quite a few areas around the perimeter.
If it's ever gonna snow again, we might use it, yeah. All right, uh, this is a public hearing, so, um, if, if there's something they'd like to say, if you could maybe sit in that chair and use that microphone, please, 'cause everything's gonna be, uh, our notes are gonna be done by video, so, and if, and I did have a sign-in sheet there, too, so just make sure that everybody signs in.
Yeah, my name's James Weston, uh, Weston Brothers Cranberries, and we own the property all the way around their property. And a few questions that I have, we've been to the DEP and, and, uh, over there next to Middleboro, and we've talked to Mr. McLaughlin. And right now, they're permitted for a thousand gallons of water a day. And I know he said he's talked to Boston, Mr. McLaughlin hasn't heard a word. And, uh, what we wanna know is if they're gonna increase their water usage, it's gonna increase the circle, which increases the infringement on our cranberry bog behind there. 'Cause right now, it's right to the edge of the bog, and if it gets any bigger, it'll be into the bog and we're cultivating the bogs, I mean spraying and fertilizing and that kinda thing. And, uh, another thing, uh, he had all the measurements of all that other water and drains and everything. I was wondering what those sediment pits, how much water are they scheduled to hold? And if we had, like this year, we had a six-inch rainstorm on little, under two acres of land, would that fit into those sediment ponds? 'Cause I don't want any runoff coming on our property, because we have quality control, especially with the river being right there, that if our pump happens to be running and something comes down the river, we have some concern. And, uh, the other thing is, we've had people on our property, uh, not that it's their fault, but, uh, the people eating ice cream and stuff, the kids running, they're out on the bog and everything, and the previous owner actually saw them out there and, uh, we'd like to request a fence all the way around the property, complete. Something that nobody can get over it or anything like that to keep any kinda trash from blowing anywhere or anybody walking on our side, that's all I care and, uh... You know, other than that, that's of all my concerns were, and, uh, the biggest thing's the water usage, because once you start increasing the usage, then the circle has to get bigger and then you get into a zone two type thing and, and plus being a public water supply also.
Yeah, if you could explain that, I, this is the first time I had run into anything like that and I, I did talk to Kevin Fogg, uh, the Board of Health Agent and, and the engineer here and, uh, yeah, I, I didn't know anything about public wells and, and that they, you know, state monitored and all that, so if you could just go through that, it would be interesting.
Is that your first name?
Jim.
Jim, yeah, Jim is one hundred percent correct on everything that he has said. Um, so that's why we're making sure that we, make, make sure that we take the right steps to make sure that this is designed properly. And it's a process to go through DEP, and he's completely correct that we haven't gotten to Mr. McLaughlin yet. What we had to do is we had to go, they said go to the Board of Health, so we went to the Board of Health and the Board of Health said go to DEP. So I went to DEP and I got bounced over to Brett Rowe and then I got bounced to Boston. So we went to Boston, I said, "All right, what do we do here?" Well, they said, "Well, you gotta get a flow assessment first." So I did the flow assessment for the wastewater piece of the pie, that's the permit we got. That's only half of the step that we gotta take. So now we gotta go to Mr. McLaughlin and present our case to make sure that we do not go over the thousand gallons per day and the radius doesn't grow and, you know, and, and the water health, the Westerns know, I know, DEP knows that that well is considered a non-conforming well because you don't have control of your complete radius, all right? So that's why it's very important that we make sure that's as designed as best as we possibly can to keep the water as clean as we possibly can and we don't cause problems with the well. So that is a critical component in, in step of that. And in answer to the question on will these work if we have that six-inch rainfall? Yeah, we designed this for the hundred year and the NCIRIS method is almost ten point six inches, so these, these are big basins and I could guarantee you the water that infiltrates into those when everything's said and done is gonna be a lot cleaner than what is going in the ground there now, 'cause there's nothing there now, so...
So I was interested in that, I didn't know that the particular well at this site was a, a, considered a public well and the reason is, is because it services the customers that come in, it's, or that's considered, if it services over...
Yeah.
Twenty-five people or something like that?
Transient water supply, that if you service more than twenty-five or more people sixty days out of the year, you need to have that. And, and that's super important, 'cause we gotta, we gotta protect the agriculture, we gotta protect the drinking water, so...
And that's regulated by the state?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it's tested, the Board of Health has to keep records of it, just like they, they test these guys all the time, so... I mean, we've gotta, it's like I said to you, we've gotta get to planning. We're gonna get a lot of steps through DEP. We're gonna get through the CONCON, we're gonna get through the Board of Health for the SEPTIC. So we do, we're doing our best.
Okay.
And I, hopefully, when everything's said and done, we've got something that is nice and environment, we have to have some, not, hopefully, we have to have something that's environmentally sound and works.
Excuse me. All right, well, thank you, um, is there, is it, did that answer your questions? I mean, we will have another meeting on this eventually.
I'll be here, no, the only question I have is, uh, if by chance those sediment ponds do fill up, because if the soil's pretty, it's pretty close to the water table anyway, so it's not gonna soak away very fast. And, uh, the question I have is, where does it go when they unfold? That's the key, because I saw a map that showed little, little outlets on the backside, which theoretically means it's gonna, like I mentioned to you before, it's gonna run over onto our property. Like, right now, he's right, that there's nothing there. But the thing is, there's no asphalt there either and you're not doubling, the size of the ice cream shops being doubled. So you got that much more impervious land, then you got all the blacktop, which there is none now. Then you have a, a forty-five hundred square foot building that's impervious also. And I know he said it's being kept separate, well, that's good.
Mm-hmm.
But that's what I'm concerned about, that's all.
Sure.
I mean, other than that?
Yep.
No, and like I said, the, the fence around the property, eh, that's gotta be, because then they can use their property the way they want, right up to the edge and then, 'cause right now, it is growing up a little bit, so they can't see to come over on our side like they used to. But they have in the past and, you know, if we're putting sprays out, we don't have to worry about some kid walking out there where he doesn't belong, you know? And they love to play on the pile of sand behind the bog, too, so they walked right across it. You know, they don't know any better, but, uh...
All right.
I, I can speak to some of the stormwater comments, if you'd like.
Sure, Andy, go ahead, please.
So I guess, um, uh, regarding the additional impervious area for the building, as you mentioned, um, the applicant is directing the stormwater runoff from the roof area to a subsurface infiltration system, it's basically chambers underground. Um, so that, when applicant referred to separating those, um, those would actually be directed to the ponds, those would be, um, recharged, uh, you know, infiltrated, uh, in those subsurface systems. So there's one system for each of the buildings, ice cream shop, as well as the craftsmen tradesmen building. Um, and as the applicant mentioned, uh, those are sized for what the regulation for a hundred-year storm is, um, which is supposed to happen, um, once every hundred years, but, uh, that is not happening recently.
This year, we had, we had twenty-three inches in sixty-nine days, so...
So, um, that, I guess, on, on that aspect, um, as you know as well as anyone, um, the soils here in Carver are very good, uh, infiltrating.
Well...
Uh, there's a contingency factor on what the infiltration rate is. Um, but they, um, are improving what the existing condition is and looking at the existing points of analysis, where the stormwater currently goes, where they're discharging it now, um, basically what they need to do and what we confirmed was that, uh, they're discharging less at those points of analysis. Uh, I know, you know, to your point, there's no patuminous concrete, um, pavement out there currently, um, but, uh, probably as the applicant and the owner can speak, the gravel pavement that's been there has been there for quite some time, it's very compact, um, not like a, a crushed stone surface that would really infiltrate. Um, and my understanding, the existing catch basin that's there, it's probably been clogged for quite some time and it kinda just, the parking lot itself acts as a pond. Um, so what they're doing now, although they're adding the asphalt, um, they are going to be directing it to multiple surface basins, um, to have some storage and infiltration and do a better job at treating the stormwater before it's infiltrated in the groundwater on the site. Um, uh, it certainly doesn't mean that, um, during long prolonged storm events or sometimes rapid storm events, like a thunderstorm, when we get, you know, a quick downpour, uh, there won't be discharge from these basins from the overflow. Um, but, um, based on, um, all the information that we have available and the accuracy of that, you know, as any model goes, um, they shouldn't be creating a, or creating an issue on, on your, a budding land. So, um, I'd be happy to elaborate on that more in the next memo if, um, any of the butters, including yourself or the board members, have any concerns with that. Um, but, uh, currently, um, we believe that the applicant is, um, addressing all the stormwater management requirements for the site. Um, and I guess the, the second item with the, the fence, uh, I think that's a, a good idea. Um, strictly looking at the, the south side of the property, where they do have a stormwater basin proposed. Um, they are clearing some of the existing vegetation, uh, as the butter mentioned, is kind of creating a, a natural buffer between the properties. Um, clearing the vegetation to put the basin in, um, would kinda make that access more accessible. Um, so I, I think a, a fence along that edge, um, may, would be appropriate. Um, I don't believe that a, a fence would necessarily be appropriate for the entire perimeter, perimeter of the site, but, uh, definitely leave that up to the board and, um, you know, wanna make sure that any of the butter concerns are addressed.
Well, where they've been walking in the past and, and, uh, is out where the picnic tables are.
Right.
So that's why I just said, you know, it'd make it a lot simpler, just, just go around the property and be done with it. That way, none of the trash will blow anywhere, if there is any. And if, uh, anybody wants to walk around, they, they have a boundary. And they, you know, it gets, we're not there every minute of the day, so we can't be policing the area and, uh... And, uh, and of course, and anybody on the other side, on our side, if they're coming through with dirt bikes, you don't want them cutting through your property either.
Goes both ways.
That's right. And, uh, and that's been mentioned before, when they were talking about doing something ten years ago or so and, uh, we just wanted a fence around just to keep, just so you don't have to worry about it, you know, it's eliminate a problem. And not to mention, then they don't have to leave, far as I'm concerned, they don't have to leave the vegetation right up to the edge, because if they wanna leave, you know, make it mowed grass instead of bushes and, you know, brush, they can do that. I don't, I don't care. I just want it so nobody can walk on our property when we're not there. And not to mention the trash and that stuff, but...
So it doesn't have to be six feet tall, I want it to look like a jail, you know what I mean?
Oh, no, it don't have to be.
Because if the river's on one side, you can't get, so if we go along...
No, the river's not on one side.
I just want it to look like a caged in, you know, you can really lose that comfort of view. Six-foot chain link fence all around it.
Well, then you can explain to the people, when they walk on the bog and get something on them they're not supposed to have.
No, not like a log, I, I, I'm all, I'm all for the fence, I just don't want it to...
I'm not, I'm not requesting a fence that could keep deer out, no, it's just...
Maybe like a small post and rail fence, something...
Uh, no, I, I want something that trash can't blow through it also.
Right, yep.
About four foot high would be fine.
Yeah, 'cause then if they climb over it, they're, they're going out of their way to get over it.
Right, right.
Four or five feet, yeah.
Yeah.
I get a question. So you're saying you don't want them on your property because you're afraid they're gonna get something on it? So the pesticide you spray down, is, is that harmful to these people if they're out there?
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, they spray, of course, that's a lot of the stuff we use, it's the same thing they spray on people's lawns, but there's different regulations.
Okay, no, because what I'm trying to get at is the move in the ice cream shop, correct? You're gonna tear it down, move it?
Yeah, can't just save it, it's like that.
Right, so, uh, how close is it to the bog where if they spray that...
No, I'm, I'm talking, we, we do all our spraying at night.
All right, that's what I'm trying to figure out, is, you know...
But it doesn't dry on until probably eleven o'clock in the morning and, uh...
So once you spray it, it stays wet, as long as you don't walk on it, you're not gonna get it on you.
Yeah.
So what, what I'm trying to say is you're not spraying during the day, crazy day?
No, no.
And it's gonna spray over there?
Other than irrigating for, for sprinklers, but, uh...
They don't know anything about it.
The reason, also, too, if they see the sprinklers running, it's hot out, they may wanna go run around. The bog has no ditch around it because it's a dry bog, so therefore they can walk right down on it. And we, we've caught them there many times and we just tell them, you know... And the lady that used to own it, she saw it, she was not happy and, uh... But we have regulations that we have to keep people away and, uh, it just solves a lot of problems, just putting a fence around it and, uh, that way it keeps the trash off, if there is any. And they don't have to worry also, I mean, with those, the other building, with you're gonna have the workshops there and stuff, they don't have to worry about anybody walking from our side and on the other way, too, works both ways.
All right, I think that, I think that can be arranged, you know, we'll, we'll talk about that.
And then the other concern is the water usage and they have to find out what they're allowed to do and not to do.
Right, you still have to work with the state and a little, and, and more.
Yeah.
So this can't happen until you settle that?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's exactly right. So what we'd like to do is take, take care of planning, zoning site plan, get that done, take care of CONCON. We're gonna get DEP, if we don't get DEP, uh, then we don't get it, you know?
One question I had was, uh, has there been any projections on your water usage compared to what it used to be?
Yeah, yeah, and that's what we did is, I looked at, I looked at this, I've been doing this a long time, all right? And when they had the seventy-eight code, one of the things that they had, and, and more predominantly, was meter readings, the two hundred percent of meter readings. So this particular facility, this well, when they designed, they, they talk about the well and the water withdrawal was done, that's based on power five flows, fast food restaurant, housing out... was done, done based on power five flows, fast food restaurant, thousand gallons per day. So, that's when we looked at it and said, okay, what are, what are the facilities like this use? So we captured a bunch of data and we analyzed it. And that's when we sent the DEP, what do you think? Does, does this, does this qualify? Because you're saying it's a thousand gallons, but I, the data's not saying that. So I said, we'll use in accordance with fifteen-two-oh-three-six, which is the state sanitary code, two hundred percent of that. And we used, and we picked the, the worst year that they had and we used that. And it was three hundred and fourteen gallons per day that they were using for the facility. So then we said, okay, the rest of the ones are straight cut. We, we've got, uh, retail and the tradesmen. So that's what we're, we're presenting, we're gonna have to present to DEP. We did it in Boston, so the wastewater site, that's set, but when I'm done with water supply.
But that, that's more of a board of health issue, right?
That's a board of health issue.
I mean, so we got the board of health looking at this from the water standpoint, septic stand, standpoint.
Kevin knows what he's doing, directing us on the right direction.
And, 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 and we have conservation going to look at it, uh, for any conservation issues that you have. There are bogs, wetlands, uh, riverfront or whatever you have out there. And then you have the planning board that you with us tonight. And, uh, and we're looking at it as far as the, the buildings aspect and setbacks and, and, and site plan review. And special permit because you have two buildings here.
And, and, and the answer to, to some of Jim's concerns is, you know, the first thing that I did is I did a bunch of task tests to, to determine where the estimated seasonal high water is. And it's not actually where you'd see it, Jim, uh, Andy will tell you, it's, it's where the redox morphology is, and I came up from there. And Jim's right, there are areas here where the water's not that deep. So that's why, you know, we had to pick the right tools in the trade to try to make this thing work and be the most environmentally sound. And that's what we've done. Now, the other thing of multiple storms, all right, um, yeah, we had a lot of rain, he's right about the rainfall. Good thing is, is, is there's a well that, that, the northeast regional climate center's a well, right? In this, not too far from this area that has daily monitor readings and you can check. And the one thing that made me sleep a little better at night is checking that well and the daily readings that they use. And we haven't, we, we had a lot of rain and the way it typically is in New England, it's like two thousand fifteen, where we got six feet of snow before it stopped snowing. But we haven't had a storm where it's been ten point, when we designed these, this is ten point five, six inches in twenty-four hours. We haven't had that, but we had, they've had some doozies. So it's a good thing you can use the monitor well to check and say, this is what's going on, because that's what these guys do, they know how.
Is that the wa, is that the well up in the state forest?
There's one in, I'll, I'll, I'll find a word.
Oh, I just went.
It's one away that they got.
No, the biggest storm we had this year was six point one and then we had three or four, and three inch range and.
Middleborough had the worst one when I checked the climate center too, really checked the maps.
From July fourth to September tenth, we had twenty-three point two inches. That's the most we've ever had.
And, and if we're concerned about what happens in the winter time, that's why we've got some wicks here, we can put some more wicks in. Where the wicks get below the frost layer, so the, the water in the treatment system, it has the ability to get below the frost layer. And it's above the seasonal high groundwater. So we can put more of those in and we also can revisit, you know, the outfalls.
That's another thing, that river does come up sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, not to rush you along, but we're gonna rush you along.
I, I do just have one more thing.
Oh, okay.
It's real quick, um, I would like to see a vermin control plan in response, in regards to this project.
Vermin control?
Yeah, vermin control, preferably approved through the board of health, but regardless, I think, uh, with a restaurant style and the various other agricultural boundaries, I think it would be fairly important.
We've got a certified pest person to do it, it won't be Dave.
Fantastic, that's, that's all I, I could request.
Oh, one other question I had, it, it, on the application, it says drive-in restaurant, that, that doesn't mean drive, drive-through restaurant, does it?
Yeah, no, this is takeout only. See, that's the zoning, that's the zoning that forces some of them to descriptions.
Well, that's, that, the reason I asked that because the DEP also says that if you have a drive-through, it increases the water usage up to three thousand gallons a day, whether you use it or not. I found that out though. That's why I was just, the drive-in, drive-through, just kind of wondering.
Sure, sure, I understand. All right, when, uh, could you have this marked out for a site visit?
Two in a week, I told him.
We're, we're not gonna do December twenty-fifth, but, oh, that's the end of it.
Oh, come on. He can dress up as Sam.
When can you do it, in a couple of days, uh, maybe sometimes next week, we could visit?
I'll, I'll email you to confirm, Toby. Sound fair?
What's that?
I will email you to confirm.
Yeah, sure, I mean, I'd like to, to set a date for a, a site walk, um, uh.
Set it, I'll stake it.
About, uh, Monday, December twentieth? Today, uh, would, would that work with everybody? Say at noon time?
Works for me, yeah.
Okay, so, let's do site walk. And if we could have the buildings and the islands in the front, so we could see where the traffic's gonna go in and out. And I think we can kind of figure out whether, yeah. Cause the sun goes down shortly after that, it seems, so. Site walk, so that'd be Monday, December twentieth. All right. Yeah, so, um, so we'll, we'll continue this, um, entertain a motion to continue this, uh, public hearing to December, uh, let's see, it'll be the twenty-eighth.
I'll make that said motion.
At seven o'clock. Okay, so it'd be Kevin and Ellen. Okay, uh, so those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, okay, so five zero. Uh, to continue. All right, thank you. All right, next, um, oh, we have endorsement of plans, we can push that off to the end of the meeting. Uh, we just have to sign the plans for Marion Drive. Uh, the last thing we have, uh, tonight, I know it's getting late, is a presentation and, uh, presentation and discussion of the Jellystone campground, which is map one twenty-four lot thirteen dash zero and map one twenty-five lot three dash A, which is, uh, Twenty Shoestring Road, which I think is, uh, shady acres, uh, at this particular time. But, uh, or was shady acres. And, uh, we're here tonight with these, uh, people and they're going to, uh, talk about what they're gonna do out there and then we're trying to schedule a public hearing, uh, for, uh, the site plans and anything that's gonna concern the, uh, the planning board. And if you could, uh, yeah, please use the microphone so that, uh, notes can be taken by the video.
I'm, uh, Dick T. Donaditis, uh, from Webby Engineering. And, uh, the project that we're presenting tonight as an informal meeting under section thirty-one twenty-one of your bylaws is, uh, was shady acres up until about a year ago this month, where, when Northgate Resorts out of Grand Rapids, uh, Michigan, uh, purchased them and added them to their nationwide Jellystone Park compacts that they have. Uh, we have over here, this is Rob Kraus, he's the project manager coming out of, uh, Northgate Resorts out of Michigan. And Jerry Zemidi, she represents the contract, the vested development. Uh, basically what happened, uh, I, I think everybody here probably knows something about shady acres, it's been around for quite a while, it's a family campground. Um, it's about, um, about sixty acres or so. And basically it was, it's, it's a campground that's been put together for RVs and trailers over many decades. And, uh, when Northgate purchased it last year, they had this vision to make it a, a really up, upgraded park. So they, they brought me in and I primarily do wastewater treatment and, and subdivisions and that kind of thing. But, um, so they wanted to centralize the wastewater treatment. This, this had a number of, of, uh, Title V systems on it. It had a, uh, it basically has a, a tight tank, it has an area where RVs dump their sewage in the ground. What they're gonna have now, which has already been designed, it's, it's part of this package here, uh, and it's before the DEP. It's not something that the, that the planning board has to worry about, the DEP is, is reviewing this. It's gonna be a significant, some, something around twenty-four to thirty thousand gallons. We're at twenty-four thousand, but we're looking at possibly a little bit more. The site is originally licensed for two hundred and seventy-eight units. We're bringing it up to three hundred and twenty-four units. But with that, it's coming a whole different type of, uh, camping experience that seems to be the trend around the country. They're adding what, basically what they call cabins. And the cabins look like, uh, log cabins, but they're still on, they're on frames, very similar to tra, trailers. Uh, and very similar to trailers, they, they have wheels, but they will be sitting on pads, they'll be in permanent positions. Now that, that phase of the project will be up in, I, I'll remove this for a second, you can flip this. Just to show you that phase of the project, I'm gonna launch that, that phase of the project is basically in this area, uh, which is kind of a gnawedly, kind of a gnawedly, uh, part of the project. And, uh, that's going to be phased in over the next year. But the critical situation with this here is that the, the season is from April fifteenth to October fifteenth. They just shut down, uh, in October fifteenth, and we started construction on, on the active area, which is the previous page. This is the area that's been used for RVs and trailers over the last few years and, and, and the one that was active for the season. Uh, we're putting in water lines, we're gonna have a centralized water system, a major water supply system. As the previous people were saying, you know, you have to have, uh, it's a community system, it's under control of DEP, has to be approved by that. We're in that process also, that takes some time. The wastewater treatment plant is also gonna be, uh, sewer, sewage system in the streets. So sewage systems and water distribution systems are gonna be through these streets. Now, they're not really streets, they're really fifteen-foot drives, all permeable soils, uh, there's no, no pavements going in here. Um, you're, you're basically creating a more modern park. Right now, the way the, the, the park is organized is that RVs and trailers can't, kind of come in and fit where they can, somewhat of a random pattern. Uh, Jellystone and Northgate Resorts requires you to have a forty by sixty, twenty-four hundred square foot area for each campground. So you're not sticking, you're not next to your neighbors, uh, you know, you're not butting up against each other. You have a campground with a little campfire area with a place to park your car. And it's, it's pretty much of a, a very high upgrade. When they add the cabins in the second year, which we'll be working on, they'll, um, they'll have about three hundred and twenty-four units altogether. And that'll all be serviced by the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant will upgrade the, the water quality to a very, very high level. Will be down to less than five milligrams per liter of, of nitrates. I mean, right now, we just got septic systems everywhere, so. So this is taking over a, a, a very well-known, uh, and well-reputed campground that was put together by a family over the years, and they're taking it to, to a much higher level to be more competitive with that kind of camping experience that they're seeing. Now, the, the other thing about these, these cabins is, the cabins provide a type of campground, this type of campground that my wife would go to, like, she doesn't like to go camping, period. And we've been to, I have five adult children now, but we took the Jellystone Park up in New Hampshire many, many times. And the great thing about bringing little kids there is they could kind of wander around, there's all kinds of amenities. There's, there's gonna be a water park here in the second phase. There's, uh, a, a, a good-sized pool associated with that. There's, um, there's gonna be other kinds of amenities as they fit them in over the years. But right now, this is, this is a, a park that's, that I think the town's gonna be very proud of. Uh, and we're not saying anything negative about the other campgrounds, they're all nice campgrounds, they're good experiences. But the camp, the cabin experience is something different. It's gonna have a kitchen, it's gonna have a bathroom. You don't have to go, like the Jellystones that we went to up in New Hampshire, you're basically in a shed. You know, it's a, like a one-bedroom shed, it's just got a partition wall in it. And there's a centralized shower and bathroom and all that, which is, you know, a great experience for some people, not so great for other people. But they're gonna have all of the units, the RVs, trailers, and the cabins, are all gonna have kitchens. Well, they do now, uh, but the cabins aren't there. The, the RVs and the trailers are gonna have kitchens and bathrooms, obviously that's the way they're sold. But we're gonna be taking care of them, they don't have, they don't have to go off-site to get rid of the sewage or to hook up to the water. All the water and sewage lines are coming right up to their trailers or, or their, their pad, basically. And, uh, and they'll hook up right there, so it won't be, you know, hoses running all over the place and it won't be, uh, water lines that they don't even know where they're coming from, you know, there's, this, this will be a centralized water system. There's three wells on there right now that are under DEP scrutiny and that are approved. But, but they're not the kind of wells that we want. We want to have a centralized well system that's gonna be kind of in the, I, I think we have it on two sheets, beyond that. Yeah, it's up, yeah, it's up in that area, there's a, there's a bog up there that's been abandoned for many, many years. And Northgate just bought it, what, two weeks ago, they, they, they purchased that bog, it was abandoned, it's isolated. It was the only piece within the property that they didn't own, so they bought that and that's where our wells are going. We were out there with the DEP today with their water experts and talking about putting in four, four, uh, concentric wells, they're gonna be fifty-one feet apart. And they're set in a place so they have the, the proper, um, zone one area, you talked about that tonight with, with a couple of people. The zone one area for this, these wells are gonna be a hundred and sixty-nine foot radius, so there's over three hundred foot diameter. And it's in an area where nothing else will be happening, these are, gonna be pristine, kept that way. So this is the kind of thing we're, we're trying to show and, actually, let's, let's just give a glimpse of the wastewater treatment plant, it's, it's down there, yeah. Uh, and there's the bog again, and that's, that, that little, little way, that little rectangle coming out, that's where the wells are gonna be. And again, we talked to the DP today, Michelle Reagan at DP, and she said, that's fine, we can do that, we walked the site. Uh, it takes a while to get approved, you gotta get, you gotta do test wells, you gotta do major testing. Uh, you gotta have the right yield, you gotta have the right, uh, you know, biological system. Now, these are the tanks that will be going in the ground. We have an alternative, we can either do this or we can do concrete. Um, but these tanks are, there's gonna be, yeah, one more should show the whole row. And again, this isn't, I guess, two more, okay, there it is, okay. These are, as you can see, there, there's actually the surf, the, the second drawer and the middle drawing shows you that, that they're actually underground. So you're not seeing one of these big buildings with a wastewater treatment plant. We've got this exact system, a little bit smaller, that I designed and, and is serving sixty, it's going to be serving sixty-eight condo units up in, up in Sitewards, a place called Stockbridge, Stockbridge Landing. And it's in operation right now, we designed it last year, it got built last year, and it met all the requirements of the DEP. So we're using that same state-of-the-art, uh, type of, uh, of, uh, technology again, because it works so well up there. It's not, it's not unsightly, you know, you, you can, it, it only, the, the most you rise is, come up is a couple of feet and you can easily, uh, you know, buffer those. And there's a, there'll be a control building, but it's a very relatively small, it's, it's bigger than just a normal shed. The control building will have the panels in it and will have all the situations that can be inspected by the DEP and they, they're serviced on a regular basis. So this is really high-end stuff we're talking about. And Northgate's, you know, putting out a lot of, uh, money into this and a lot of ingenuity, uh, to get this done. But the key to the whole thing is that some of this has to be done by April fifteenth so they can open up again, otherwise, you know, they, they, they lose a ton of money that they, that they're investing in this. So, some of, some of the work has already been done, that doesn't have to come before this board. But what we're looking for now, if we go back to the, uh, yeah, you, you'll see this, the area down in the lower area, that's an expansion of the actual footprint that's there now. And that area that's up there, like an oblong or a teardrop, is the other expansion area. So we're coming before the, the, the planning board. board for those two areas. So that's the, the focus of, of the design review, and, uh, we're hoping for, you know, a favorable outcome of, of our effort. Uh, now, obviously, this is not the public hearing, we're going to try to get in on your January, January eleventh, if we can get the publications done in time, uh, there's a little crazy thing having to do with the, the, the days that we have to publish and, and the fact that it, you'd have to, if you, if you figured it out, you know, uh, as to fourteen days before, you'd, you'd be publishing on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve, but you can publish before that, in other words, you have to, you have to publish at least fourteen days ahead of time, you have to do two in a row, but you can publish sixteen days, I'm pretty sure of that, we're going to, Bruce and I are going to look into it a little closer, but in other towns that we've done, and you are going by state law, you have to publish your, your hearing date no, no greater, no, no sooner than fourteen days, uh, in, in other words, you have to publish your fifteen days, sixteen days, I believe that's the rule, uh, we're going to confirm that, and if we can do that, we're going to probably publish in the Patriot Ledger, and because the local paper doesn't publish in the Times, we need it, and then we'll see you again in a public hearing on January eleventh, and we're hoping that your peer reviewer, Andrew Glines, will be able to give us some input along the way, uh, yeah, I'm going to leave him this whole set of plans and send him, uh, an email with, uh, with my report along with the plan so he can give us his comments, and they're pretty much going to be the same kinds of comments he was talking about with the other people, uh, you know, stormwater is a big thing on developments, we're still working on some stormwater, so we will be, by the time you get fully involved, we'll have a stormwater plan to go along with this, but it's not shown on here. The, the toughest thing about this is that you have all, uh, dirt roads, and we're going to make them gravel and, um, and stone, uh, but in real heavy storms, like we were talking about that six-inch rainstorm, you get some erosion, so we're trying to figure out, okay, we get some steep areas, how do we handle that? Just having a stormwater system that has a basin at the bottom doesn't take care of the fact that the, the roads can get washed, so we're trying to work with that. Maybe Andy has a, has a bright idea, he can tell us how to do it, so, but anyway, so that's it, we, we don't want to keep you any longer, you had a long, rough night, but, but this is the idea, and we're, we're anxious to put it into work so that a good portion of it will be done as phase one, and it'll be done by April fifteenth, uh, you know, that's our deadline for the first part of the park, which is the lower part, and then we'll be continuously working on the upper part and that lower part, once we have planning board approval, even during the season, we'll be, we'll be building that, you know, kind of shielding from the, from the rest of the park, but we'll be building that out with your approval for the expansion for the next season. So that's, that's pretty much it, and open to any questions?
Okay, uh, the only thing I have to say is I'm pretty sure it'll be the second meeting in January, I'm just telling you that. The other thing is, is you file plans for special permit, and I think it's just site plan review, not special permit.
Right, I was, I was actually gonna, I was hoping your, your attorney was going to stay here, I was going to ask that question, if she, if she knew.
Well, Andy can look at it and probably.
Well, you asked me why we, why we thought it was special permit, not that we want to go with special permit, but when you look at all the categories and you look under the, the different districts, and this being in residential agricultural, under RA is the very first column, you won't find campground in, like, the four or five pages of, of categories. The only thing it seemed to come under was commercial recreational, okay, and that had an SB one star, one, one asterisk, which means special permit by planning board, uh, SB two stars was special permit by ZBA, and, and so that's why I came to that conclusion, but I would love to hear that, that we would just go inside plan.
But if I, I.
Best play it safe.
Is that, is that something that you would look at, Andy? Normally?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, uh, we certainly review, um, all the applicable sections, um, but it's not uncommon, um, for East Foston O'Neal when we're submitting to other municipalities to need some legal clarification on the, the use, uh, because a lot of the use descriptions aren't very clear in the use tables.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think, um, I mean, from a review standpoint, the amount of effort that we've put in for the review is the same for a special permit as a site plan review.
Right.
But, yeah, as we saw with the legal counsel on previous projects, there's other stipulations on why the applicant.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can send this off to Amy to take a look at this, but the, the way it was explained to me, because I looked at it with the building inspector, and he said that the park already exists, so it doesn't really need a special permit, and it would just be site plan review, but we can, if you take a look at it and you think that we, we need a legal, uh, opinion on this, I'll certainly get that for you.
And obviously, special permit has other connotations to it as far as appeals and all that stuff, so obviously, site plan review would be more favorable for us, and, and we'll, we'd rather go in that direction, it does hit all the same issues, I mean, there's nothing different than what Andy's going to review from site plan to special permit, I mean, except maybe there's some legality issues, but not, not on this, not on the engineering part.
Right.
You know, so, uh, so we'd be very happy to hear, you, you know.
Yeah, that's the first thing we'll look at, we'll make that priority, and then, um, I will confirm that town's legal counsel, as well as the building official and Foston O'Neal are all on the same page on the requirements on the submission.
Yes.
And if we need you to change the application form, you know, we can certainly review the rest of the documents.
Well, the other thing we have is we got this chicken and the egg thing, the way I look at it, the thirty-day stipulation on, on the Your Butters list, it's like that thirty day has to catch that, uh, hearing date, which now you're saying might be January, what was it?
It would be, uh.
So if we were going January eleventh, I could put in the Butters list right now, and I'd catch the January eleventh.
Yeah, it'd be the twenty-fifth of January, yeah.
But.
I mean, I went over it with the office people, and they said there's no way that we could make the.
Yeah, and I, I talked to them and tried to convince them the other way.
I know you did.
But if it's the January, if it's the next date, is, is it the twenty-fifth of January?
Uh, yeah.
Well, then I can't do the Your Butters list until, like, Christmas time, so I mean, so you get caught in that, the thirty days is really weird, I, I don't know if any, I don't know if you've run across it in any other town, I have, and by the way, I used to, I lived here for fourteen years, uh, if you know Pierre Cole, he lives in the house I built in nineteen eighty-five, and he's also a long-term client of mine, but, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to begin our review, um, and as we've done in the past, potentially issue a initial comment memo, um, so that applicant will be able to address some of the, the concerns originally, uh, prior to the public hearing, um, so in the grand scheme of things, that may not impact the project approval timeline, um, but, uh, I guess I, I defer to, um, the planning department on, uh, advertisement requirements.
Right, right, right.
Well, the critical thing is if we missed, uh, January eleventh, some of the stuff that we're planning to do probably won't get done by April fifteenth, and so we're trying to make sure that, because there's a, there's approval and then there's construction and then there's, you know, all the things that go along with the final elements of construction, and you got people coming in, they're definitely, I mean, strangely enough, everybody had to move their units out of here by October seventeenth, I think it was, or, yeah, but from what I hear from, from Rob and from the manager on site who's JP, JP DeSarno, uh, almost the, the whole park got booked up again, right, for next year, or a good deal of it, so, so you're expecting people at the gates on April fifteenth, and you don't want to turn them away because that'd occur your business for the year, and there are some people who, who rent for long term, there's some people who rent for a week at a time, uh, and again, back to the cabin situation, they feel very strongly, and I, I agree with them, that if we have over a hundred units of cabins, and they'll be put in place, so it won't be a matter of driving things, trailers in, or, you know, backing them in, or RVs, these will be put in place and stay there, but that'll become almost like hotel destination, you know, that'll bring people in, there aren't, there aren't really any places to stay in Carver if you have a hundred and thirty-five or more units, I mean, that's, that's a big plus for the town on top of all the other campgrounds you get, so, is anybody got any comments they want to throw at us?
Have you filed, I know you've mentioned the DEP a couple of times, have you filed with the Concom yet?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Brooke is, uh, Brooke just advised us to check what Shady Acres did with their water conditions, okay, so we're, we're doing that, and, uh, there might be a need for a certificate of compliance on what they did, and we'll do that, we'll, we'll finish up their, their processing, as, as far as recording it, you know, we got to, we got to find, was there a certificate of compliance, and did it get recorded, so that's the only thing she threw, threw at me the other day, so we're going to do that. Now, we got to go, this is impacted by the Rivers Act and by wetlands and by bogs and all kinds of stuff, so we, that's one of the things, uh, it took a while to put this all together, to configure the whole site of where our restrictions were going to be, and how, how we can put these units, it, it looks like there's a, a lot of units, as you saw the other, but, but they're all on twenty-four hundred square feet, they're not on, you know, a thousand square feet or five hundred square feet. I mean, the units, for the most part, uh, the dimension is something like forty-something feet by, the width is.
The side.
No, the, uh, the actual trailers and, a, a typical unit.
Forty-two foot long is what typically is at a normal size.
In ten, twelve feet wide?
Yeah, because we have another area down here with pull-throughs, if someone has a really big long one or something like that, these are pull-through sites here that are already existing.
Right.
Anything back in here is pretty much limited to the.
And, and I don't know if everybody knows what this, where Shoestring Road is, it's down, you know, down at Tremont, so, uh, and there's signs up there for everybody to see, so.
Really, just to prove that.
Yeah, okay, I have nothing to do with it. Okay, thank you very much for having us make this presentation.
One last question, how much clearing do y'all think you're going to be doing? Because that's all, I mean, that's all wooded down in there.
Yeah, um, go ahead.
There's going to be some clearing in here, but what we're planning on doing is going back to planting trees, where we do have to take some out right there, uh, some of the trees there, I think the previous one are kind of buried, some trunks in there, so as we're getting in there, there's a lot of damaged trees where the fill was up six feet into the trunk as we're digging out what's going on here, but, so, some of them hadn't come up because they're just diseased and dying, so, uh, but we do plan on going ahead and replacing the trees.
Okay, anything else, Randy?
No, I think we're.
Well, thank you again, and. Thank you very much. Still, we'd like to be on January eleventh if possible.
I know you would, I know, and I, 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 I'll talk about it in the morning, but I think it'll be, just not to disappoint you, but I think it's going to be a second meeting.
But I think if we look at the state regulations, it says you have to, you have to publish with, no, no sooner than fourteen days.
Well, we'll, we'll look at that in the morning.
Yeah, and that's, uh, I think it would be tomorrow or that.
I'll look forward to that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so, uh, on other business, um, so I just, just want to say that we, we had hired a planner, I don't know if you, if, uh, everybody knows this, I know, I know I've talked, I bumped into some of the members of the board, we did hire a planner, and then the planner changed their mind and decided to stay where they were, so, uh, I'm working with the town administrator and the assistant town administrator, and, um, we've decided to go to a job search company, and, uh, so we're going to look for a new planner, you know, somebody that's, has the qualifications, uh, through, uh, doing that. We're also, uh, working on, uh, I, I was just informed that we're going to, may have an interview with a planner from Serped who might be able to, uh, fill in, uh, part-time for us and, uh, help us out, so, um, so we're looking into that also.
Yeah.
I am requiring, uh, that we have, uh, legal counsel here at, at all the meetings, and also like to have Andy at all our meetings, so, um.
Because we don't see you often enough, sir.
So, uh, so, so that, so that will also help us, so I, I think we're in pretty good shape, um, just, just hope at some time that we, we do find somebody that we feel is qualified. Anybody else have any other comments? Seeing none, uh, we had the minutes listed, but unfortunately, the lady that's doing, Mary Ann is doing our minutes, um, she, uh, recently hasn't been feeling well, so she is, uh, doing the minutes, uh, sometimes this week, and so we don't have the, uh, minutes of eleven-nine and eleven-twenty-three, uh, with us, and I, I hope that she, uh, she does feel better, uh, for the, the Christmas holidays. So our next meeting will be, uh, December twenty-eighth, so that is past Christmas, so I'd like to, uh, wish everybody a, a happy Christmas, and, uh, here, all the board members, the video crew, uh, Andy Glines, and, uh, everybody that's watch, washing, watching, it's been a long meeting, uh, so, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Can Elise Che so makes that motion?
No second.
Okay. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
All right, uh, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, good night and Merry Christmas.